I'll call the regular city council meeting of Monday, December ninth, twenty twenty four to order. And ask everyone to please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
All day here, shells.
Present.
Semi Pharaoh.
Here.
Hubbard.
Here.
Schlaf is absent, Tal.
Yes.
Heo.
Here.
And then Shai is absent.
Thank you very much. Item C on the agenda is approval of the meeting minutes from our city council meeting from November twenty fifth, twenty twenty four. Is there someone that would like to move the approval of the minutes?
I'll move the city council meeting minutes from November twenty fifth, twenty twenty four.
And motion by seven Pharaoh, thank you Joe.
I'll second.
Second by one, thank you. Joe, any comments on the minutes? What?
Nope.
Anyone else see anything on the minutes? Okay, please call the vote to approve the amendments.
Michelle's.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Semi Pharaoh.
Yes.
Tell.
Yes.
All day.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Motion carries. We are down to prearranged participation, and I believe we have a presentation this evening from some Dexter High School students on seizures, sensory bins, and sensory needs. Is that correct? Welcome. How many of there are you that are going to be presenting this evening? Okay, you're welcome to stand and and start. We do have what you gave us in front of us as well as in the packet. And Josh, you're gonna put it up online for everybody to see. Please.
Do they look like a combo?
Yeah.
Talking about night, it's such an honor to be here and be able to share this with you guys. Um, we are talking about seizure epilepsy awareness. My name is Nadia Unstrum. I'm a junior at Dexter High School, and this is.
Hi, I'm Leah Sobolski, I'm also a junior at Dexter High School.
I think it's a great thing to be at the table to understand the basics of what a seizure is. So a seizure is an electrical activity in the brain, and common causes are.
So seizures can actually be triggered by many factors, including epilepsy, head injury, high fever, and certain medications. Um, there are different types of seizures. Um, there's focal and generalized. So focal seizure affects one part of the brain while generalized affects the entire brain and recognize it. Any type of seizure can help with it.
So my passion for this started with my younger brother, Teddy. Right there, um.
Where are you, Teddy? Okay, there, thanks, man. I got a big guy in front of you.
He's great. He's always been the sweetest kid. Um, always he has a big heart, very caring. He's just a wonderful person to have around. I'm so blessed to call him my brother. So when Teddy was about a year old, he experienced his first seizure. This was very scary for my whole family, and we had no idea what to do in this situation. Um, we ended up calling an ambulance and he was taken to the hospital. And it was a couple of years long of a fight, um, to get an epilepsy diagnosis from him. He presented of having seizures and doctors insisted that they were fever or other causes. So it was a tough battle, but once we were able to get him a diagnosis, a lot changed for our family, and it was nice to be able to learn how to help people having seizures and uh, share his story and advocate for others.
How much time?
So I need to start it. Um, we have a picture of Teddy here after he had a seizure. As you can see, he is very tired and out. Um, this, when he has a seizure, it causes him to be very fatigued after. This picture here shows him hospital, um, here present with epilepsy and trying to find, um, a diagnosis and treating him for everything.
So thank you, Nadia. Um, I think it's important to recognize, um, genetic seizures as well before we share your story. So genetic epilepsy is caused by mutations in specific genes that affect how the brain cells communicate with each other. For example, um, the CDK L five gene, which is linked to various conditions, plays a critical role in brain development. When it does not function properly, it can lead to severe disabilities and frequent seizures. Other examples of genetic mutations linked to epilepsy include FBN one A and KCN Q two, which can also cause seizure disorders. These are often associated with rare, complex conditions, making treatment and management more challenging. Early diagnosis is critical. It allows families to access targeted treatments and participate in research that advances medical understanding and care. Genetic epilepsy highlights the need for more awareness, research funding, and supporting systems for families dealing with these conditions.
Do you want me to wait for my questions at the end?
Good to be today. Kira has been a wonderful parent to us. She's also created more of a passion for me for those with epilepsy and seizure disorders. Um, Kira brings light to everybody in the room. She's definitely a silly goose, and you just love having her around and being able to work with her. Um, she does have the CDK L five gene, and it has been so amazing to be able to work with her and her mom, who does have a Hope Foundation. So if you guys are curious about checking that out, that is Kira's Hope Foundation. And they do a lot of work to educate everybody on genetic epilepsy disorders, and it's just been incredible.
So why does this matter? Well, now that you've heard your story, let's talk about why it is so important. One in ten people will have a seizure in their life, and three million Americans will live with epilepsy, a leading cause of seizure. This means seizures could happen to anyone around us. Did you know that one in twenty six people will develop epilepsy in their life? It is a growing public health issue, and understanding how to respond is critical. That's where the importance of including seizure training along with CPR and A B training comes in. Having five students trained in these lifesaving techniques greatly increases survival and recovery odds. Immediate action could be the difference between life and death for someone having a seizure. So this is a graph that represents the survival outcomes of someone in the grave's death and her whole life, right? As you can see, it's a very graphic.
So we have a couple of videos here for you guys today. Um, a lot of our information came from the Epilepsy Foundation. This is a nonprofit that educates people on epilepsy and seizures. And I think, um, if you ever have any like curiosity about this, this would be the place to go. Can you give us videos for that?
Welcome. If that's true, then.
And because it's the video.
Oh, okay. That's okay, thank you.
So our solution is to implement, um, seizure training within our CPR and A B training for all teachers in depth. In addition to training healthcare peers, um, they also want to offer community workshops for parents and students and caregivers. The more people that know how to respond to a seizure, the better. Another key element in educating students about seizure per se is if their seizure has to end in school, um, every student is prepared to help, and it creates a more supportive environment for everyone looking out for one another.
So I think it's important to show basic teacher training, not public touchline. And then the other one is talking a little bit about the importance of, um, when you. Uh, the other one is talking about the importance of. Um, when you call your parents, what's dangerous, and who's talking about why it's important for you to have a seizure training. So the other thing that I want to talk about is building and improving the community. So if we have any stuff that we're taking into school that's shared, I think it's important to also bring this out to Dexter. So we would like to, um, hang up some posters that have basic steps on what to do if somebody has a seizure. We do have copies of these if anybody is interested. Um, we also would like to set up a tree next to it for, um, anybody who has epilepsy or seizure conditions. Um, and then we also want to recognize that November is epilepsy awareness month, and we would like to organize a walk or something around our city. We'd love to that, all people and families that deal with this on the video.
Well, I work with are comfortable with them. I have seizures, and it helps when the people I work with are comfortable with them.
Information up here. We also have business time at heart, um, if anybody's interested. We thought just because we were up there to share why this really matters to us, and one of the things that it matters most to me is I work with my development disability nurse. Working with the disabled really, I have a passion for it, and it fills my heart. And I think starting with small steps like this in my community can really benefit me with my future career.
Yes, and, um, I would like to become a doctor of osteopathic medicine, so being able to work with these students of all ages from all the schools, and that's where it has really meant a lot. And to incorporate the, um, science and medicine behind everything, it's just.
You both have done a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ray, you had a question?
Go.
These could be hard.
Or they could be really easy. Have you started some sort of, uh, awareness group in your school?
Well. We have a lot of students that have been interested in helping out, and, um, you know, so. We've also talked with teachers, and we've been in contact with the board of education, um, starting to talk with the staff about how we can enhance your training. But yeah, we'd love to make a group.
And we've actually written a letter to you.
Yes.
To the school board, have you made a presentation like this to the board of education?
Well, I feel honored you came to us before the board of education.
Let me just ask a question here was about, uh, early diagnosis. How do you go about determining early diagnosis? Do I have to wait for someone to actually have a seizure when they're younger and hopefully do the right thing, or is there some sort of medical test or DNA test or blood test, or is it just specific to that gene not acting correctly? I'm sorry.
And so there's a lot of ways to, um, to diagnose somebody. Usually, if you wouldn't know somebody has epilepsy until they have their first seizure, but once they do have their first seizure, and you're usually in the emergency room or at your primary care doctor's office, um, they can run genetic testing, and nowadays they can do what's called, um, genetic panels. And so they can actually test for like a hundred different genes with one blood test at one time. And it usually takes a few weeks to get results back, but you can tell really quickly. And epilepsy awareness has come such a long way that, um, over fifteen years ago, you would test for one gene at a time, and we take five to you. And take years for a diagnosis, but now it can take just one blood test and then four weeks.
Does that test automatic when a newborn is presented, or does it have to be some? Uh huh.
Although with individual disorders, um, different foundations are advocating for newborn screening, especially when getting that diagnosis very early could make a difference in treatment. If there's an intervention that you could give a baby early on, you could prevent some of the complications down the road.
Right, I'm just kind of looking for like a influenza thing where, you know, they hit everybody at once. But it may be we're not at that point yet. Right, I saw at least four or five different genetic variables there, and I'm sure there's a million and more. Is that, is that a hereditary thing or strictly genetic?
Ones are what we call genovum, meaning it's a one-off, it's a spontaneous mutation during, um, pre-embolism.
Do you have a let's say a handout you pinned up on your boards at school? Like, uh, you know, something like this, but you know, given a brief overview of so that people become, you know, actually take one and become more aware. Is Ed Ruth on, uh, he is, I'll ask him a question too.
In the meantime, can I say something real quick? Right, with regard to your first question about, um, the groups, you know, community organizing takes time, and I would, I just wanted to point out that, um, Callie, who is a teacher here at Dexter High School, she's come to us for the last, what, three years? To talk to us about the different needs in her classroom, um.
What about this specific need?
This was, she came and talked to us about it a couple of months, the last month, maybe. And it's always been a good discussion. We give her great, um, you know, I did, like, she, you know, we, well, you always respond thinking they're great ideas. They're just things that pop into my head, but like, come here and tell us about it, you know? Um, help us, help you advocate, and so they've been working on this for a while, and it's, this is the first time that you've come to us. So I think, you know, sometimes it just takes time, and I'm glad you're here and.
The reason I asked about a pamphlet is I work at a union shop, and there's been discussion in human resources about being aware when people are sick, and they didn't seem to have anything about, uh, I specifically asked about epilepsy. And I wanted them to include that in their, um, when you notice somebody is sick or not feeling well, you approach them, don't let them deny it. They don't want to go home or, and even down to drug use or whatever. It's all about protecting the safety of everyone else in the factory and the person themselves. So I was wondering, do you have something like I can, uh, well, something like this, I wanted to hand into my, uh, my, uh, board so that they could, I want that, I want that specifically included in my shop, as we're open twenty-four hours. You know, and every personnel ain't gonna be there all the time, and supervisors aren't gonna be there. Everybody needs to be aware of it, so anybody can grab anybody. I think that's great. Now, I don't know what this body can do for you other than be aware of it, help you promote it in any way we can, which I'm more than happy to do. Ed, are you on the phone on a Zoom?
Mr. Root, are you there? Yeah, can you unmute him? Thanks, Dash.
Ed?
Yep, I'm here.
Uh, the fire department trained in this at all?
Uh, yeah, we train on it. Um, generally from the fire standpoint or EMS standpoint, if someone sees an one of the first things we're gonna basically do is, um, try to move any uh, equipment, chairs, stuff, uh, away from them so that they're not causing themselves, uh, danger to themselves per se, and then we're gonna try to then, you know, try to wait it out depending on to the level of the seizure. And then get them to the hospital as quick as we can.
Okay, so they are aware of it, there's a protocol being developed, and I'm assuming the county sheriff has the same protocol.
Yep.
Thank you, Ed. Thank you.
I really appreciate you coming tonight and educating us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We can be, if we can be a resource to help communicate with the school board, let us know too.
And that is the fact that individuals who have seizures and have mental problems with seizures, and some of them could be something you wouldn't even think of. I've heard of a guy that had seizures with growth things. So something that I'd like to advise parents or loved ones of people with epilepsy or other disorders to do is go visit your local law enforcement and, um, introduce them to your person. Make sure that they know that law enforcement is safe, and I think that that's something that if we could let our community know that, I think it would be very valuable.
Well, if we can help by putting you in touch with the sheriff department also, we certainly have that resource.
You know Alicia?
A little bit. Enough. I think she'd take a call.
I bet you would.
That'd be great.
I love your shoes. Mike. Yeah, I was gonna say that, oh, they're an ass, I am. Of course, they say that. Thanks for coming. Thanks for wanting to board us.
When you and I get seizures, you're already just gonna be fine. Usually it's just a standard, just put on my foot and hit on the cage.
I, I'd be interested to see how you guys progress, and I'd actually like to hear a follow-up report later in the year. See how far you get along with the school and the school board. See if we can, uh, get, I don't, I don't want to call it a flob, or I mean, an awareness group or something that actually, uh, um, spreads a, a, a need and a concern. So that'd be really great. I mean, I don't know if you guys could ever come back, you know, you might just get out of school and leave. All right, please consider that when you guys get a little more up and running. Like to hear the response from the school board and see where you've been.
If you ever want to get.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Thank you.
If you have any questions or concerns, feel free to contact them.
Thank you. Well done.
Very good.
Okay, so that concludes the prearranged portion of our agenda. Oh, do they have one more?
Yeah.
Oh. Oh, sorry. misunderstood.
Oh, yeah, I meant to ask about those. Here, let me see.
Don't, don't take that rubs too out, Ray.
Well, that looks very interesting.
All right. That is, um, one of the sensory bins you might see around the community and in our school. So, um, this is also the fact that has sensory needs. Um, our sensory needs, um, have different people experience the world through their senses. Um, people who are physically disturbed, or are often experiencing the world differently with their senses.
Oh, I love it. Do you set these in public places similar to those little library?
Yes.
Is that the general idea? Okay. Bob?
And this is for you.
I like the little detergent thing.
This is just the neurosurgical person walking down the street, and then after that. It will show you the different things that might be in a sense.
Oh, jam together.
This, um, the day you have your sensory box, it's actually, um, Liam, um, was at a restaurant, and they had some of the restaurants that he likes. Um, me, wanted to help do a project on and trying to get it out to restaurants in different public places. Bring awareness that sensory needs.
Is there any remediation that's available to sensory overload or?
Yeah. So, um. So I think, um, we can go to probably the next slide. So the sensory bins are something that helps this. Oh, this is good. Go ahead. Um, so in, in the bin, there's this information too, um, you can explain it.
So headphones are a very helpful tool that we can use to help calm anxiety and ease overwhelming noises for people. They can help, um, filter out some sensory stimuli and create a calming environment that is notable and can be taken care of on the go. So if somebody's really overwhelmed by sound or maybe just they like the feeling of headphones, it can be really helpful for them to have that, especially in a public place where things can get kind of loud. And, um, Rubik's cubes are also a very helpful tool. Um, they can also help sort of move. Uh, it's a very systematic structured way, and they're great for keeping the mind calm and relaxed because they're systemic. Systematicness. They're great for growing, they find a good feel. So a lot of people with ASD tend to be very good with numbers, and they find it very comforting when they're working with, um, materials like that. So I think it's really valuable, and we'll have them available for you.
Um, and then not only do we have just the, um, sensory pieces, but we also have some different, the health of social skills and social interactions. Um, one of the things are Uno cards. Um, Uno cards are an awesome tool that adds some structure and familiarity. And they're a good way to improve your social skills. Uno cards can be an awesome outlet for people to distract themselves with the game and build some important personal skills. Liam, what's your favorite type of Uno? Do you like regular Uno or Super Mario Uno?
Me too.
Um, there are sensory stickers in there. Um, whenever, um, someone uses one of those. Um, the sensory stickers are a great tool to help provide a source of calmness and provides you a unique way to fidget wherever you go. Sensory stickers are great for anxiety and reduce stress in your mind.
There's no medicine available for this right now. Right now it's distraction or, um, quieting There's no medicine available for this right now. Right now it's distraction or um quieting of the stimulus.
Well, I mean.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna, you know.
No, in fact, this is probably the best source, but there are.
So I think every person's sensory is probably. Medication that they can also make different depending on the situation.
Right. Yeah, I don't know if one does something bad for the other.
Um state agreement, they would have like a sensory profile on each individual person and sort of see what sensations they like, what sensations they're earthy. And they'll give you some strategies on how to manage those different sensory needs. And then some people who have anxiety, for example, this is medicine.
So there's, there's no, you know, uh cut and chase, this and that, it's very widespread and it can be almost, could be almost anything that would trigger this.
Well, a lot of occupational therapies of uh therapists also suggest doing sensory diets in the classrooms. Um so we have, we don't implement. Some of them can be very structured, um but for the most part, a lot of our students do kind of follow the idea of a sensory diet uh sensory diet. Where you have some more heavy lifting type um activities or and we structure them as jobs in our classroom or around the school. Where you're doing a lot of heavy lifting and kind of give you some uh specific sensory input. But we do a lot of like recycling and stacking um books at the library and um uh and deliveries, things like that, so.
Is there a class dedicated specifically towards this group?
Class, it's called peer-to-peer. So it offers opportunities for neurotypical students and sort of higher means to work together as a team and build friendships and bonds. It's really great. And then we kind of have um other things that you can get involved in that kind of branch off from peer-to-peer. So we have Snap Club, which is students need exception years. So we do a lot of different things and um we have like a Friendsgiving for staffs club, there's after-school events, we have dance parties and all those fun things to make sure that everybody feels included and anybody can join. Uh we also have rock unified sports to the high school and the other schools, which has been amazing to be involved in.
Can you elaborate on unified sports?
So sports um like peer-to-peer allows neurotypical people and people and higher means to work together on a team to play, to play games and um. We mean, so we have track, soccer and basketball um all in texture. And it's really cool. Um a lot of students go from not being able to work on a team while we're not having that opportunity and being able to do that, and it's a really great thing. Um right now, we're in the middle of basketball season and we're just starting practice and it's been amazing to see our students working together and building those friendships.
I, I think you guys are way ahead of the curve, honestly.
Here is a statewide um program through um Grand Valleys where we get our. Um it's called Start. Um and then um Unified is actually a worldwide program. Um we're hoping that and I think it'll be two years from now, they're in the World Cup in Detroit.
You know any other schools in the district doing this?
Um, oh, in our district, yeah. Um so we actually work, um our team consists of third, third, twelfth grade. Um and then we break off and play games against our age level, but we all practice together. So that's been created a really nice community also.
Thank you so much.
A lot of times I meet to work with the fifth and sixth grade kids and work with that teacher. So our students can go between rules and work with the other students and it really is both a great community. And especially for the kids in the younger grades coming up to the high school and having that experience and connections is really great.
I think it's very important. It's all about inclusion, so obviously they feel comfortable.
Yes, they're always a point of great dreams.
Well, that's a trick.
You, your energy and passion to learn about this is incredible to me.
Um here's some examples of other sensory bins um where you can use um rice, measuring props, seeing tools, dry pasta, popcorn kernels, small toys, fidgets. And headphones. And sensory bins are helpful. Um they help someone explore different texturing sites, sometimes smells through hands-on play. Familiar with multiple senses, even touch sight and even smell. Um our specific bins also develop social skills through games, social stories, question cards that prompt language and social interaction. Um so the social stories in here, um Liam, you know. You read a social story is a.
And a social situation that.
Those are the same as a spouse that breaks down a social scenario to help someone interpret the social situation better. So this is an example. We um did bring the sensory bins to um some of our football games this year, and there's a just, uh there's a social story about what's expected at a football game. Um and when you wanna use headphones when it gets noisy or anything like that.
So we got a lot of students that were nervous to go to football games and they're, that's pretty cool to be that comfortable with that, and I think that's a new thing.
Um so some benefits of the sensory play, um it uh motor skills, their sensory play helps someone develop motor skills for physical strength and movement. Cognitive development, builds cognitive skills, like problem-solving, critical thinking, decision-making. Um brain development, sensory play strengthens nerve connections in the brain, which helps with learning and memorization. Um creativity, um create transformative things when given open-ended materials and the freedom to explore. And emotional development, sensory play can help develop um early self-regulation and calm someone whose experience in anxiety. And focus, sensory play can help develop abilities to focus and block out distractions. Um and the benefits of the social stories in there, um social stories help prepare students for a new situation. They reduce anxiety, help students understand expectations, and they help students understand abstract concepts or abstract social situations and break them down to be more concrete.
Well, probably my school helped or benefited from sensory bins. Sensory bins help students learn different ways by giving them hands-on activities. They get improved skills like using their hands, which are fine motor skills, thinking, cognitive skills. Talking, language skills, and working with others, which is social skills. And then, and then also controlling emotions. These bins allow students to explore and learn by touching and playing with different materials.
Um how the community benefits from the social bin or sensory bins. Um encourages social interactions, sensory bins can be designed to provide um to provide some various abilities. Maybe the. Um that builds creativity and imagination. It can be designed around different themes like nature or fantasy. Um it can help spark creativity and imagination as people make up stories, solve problems, and come up with new ideas using the thought of the bench. And our students um have put together a lot of their favorite things in there. Um and different themes that they like, different fidgets that they like. Um so it is very like personalized, a lot of like. Um and then sensory bins can incorporate science, technology, engineering, math concepts in an engaging and accessible way.
What? Go ahead.
Oh, so just to be clear, this is for us to keep?
Yeah.
So, uh Justin, I mean, if you have other ideas. I, I just think it would be great if we kept it in the lobby during the day, open to people who may bring children in who have um sensory, you know, issues or like anybody else who may come in on their own, and then also whenever we have a meeting to bring it in here for the audience.
I'd remember us.
Yeah, I know, I could use some too. Um but just so that it's readily available when we're having a meeting like this, or when someone's waiting for assistance at the city office, I think would be great.
I think out front in the lobby would be a great idea. Right by the toll cards.
And one other thing that I wanted to ask you, if you ever update the ones that you have at school or anything like that, would you be open to updating the ones that you've also left out in the community?
Yes, we actually update.
Daddy, what was, what was the phrase you used? Neurologic? When you, when you described the group, neurological, neurotypical? I didn't see that anywhere as a written word. Okay, neurotypical.
Describe people without disability. So we work alongside people who are physical and emotional and I think physically, right? So that's what I need to describe anybody else without physical.
Okay, got it. Got it. Thank you. You're very welcome. Great job.
Yeah, I learned a lot.
We should be clapping for you.
I just, I just do want to point out that um uh Mrs. Zowinski actually won a statewide award for all her efforts. Uh we're very, very, very lucky to have her in our community.
Thank you for that.
And we need to utilize that asset.
Sure, sure.
No, no. Of us?
This means you, yeah.
Oh, what do I have to fix it for? Haven't been in a.
Come around to the front, yeah.
Picture in several years. Come on, get down.
Yes.
You guys alright? It looks fine.
The nervous person.
I think I've probably learned more than I did all week. Get your barn up or raise or?
Got a roof. It's got insulation on the three walls mostly.
Got the, what do you call it? The base, foundation?
Yep. Been standing on some, I have to convince the building department that the footing inspection was the final inspection because the permit was for footings.
Yeah, all week. What else are you doing out here? So nobody's poking around. No, no, we'll poke somewhere else.
Okay. But we have concluded our pre-arranged participation. And we'll move on to non-arranged participation. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak this evening? It's like most of our audience is part of that group. How about online? Is there anyone online that would like to speak this evening? I know Larry's with the. Boy John, right? Okay, so none under the non-arranged participation? Does anyone have any declaration, or does anyone need to declare a conflict of interest at all? On anything that they see ahead of us? Hey, see none? Move on to approval of the agenda? There's a motion to approve the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda. Um I would like to move K two to M two. There are some appointments in the boards and committee appointments that um can't happen if M one is the result of M one is different.
Okay.
Was that K two to M two?
Yes, M five.
Uh I was gonna, yeah, it could be.
We can do M five.
I'll second.
Second about what?
I just, sorry, that's just typically what we do. I didn't mean to.
Yep, that's fine. Anything after M one is what she was trying to do. Any comments on the proposed agenda? Please call the vote to approve the agenda.
Semi Pharaoh?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Shells?
Yes.
Hell?
Yes.
All Day?
Yes.
Heel?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. We have no public hearings this evening. Uh we do have our meeting calendar in the packet under item I one. Anybody have any comments or things that they noticed there need to be changed? Obviously, the C E R representatives will be updated as we do on one. No comments, we'll keep moving. Our first uh report tonight is from our Public Services Superintendent. Good evening, Tim. How are you?
Good. How's everybody tonight?
Good, sir.
I have the two before and for any guys, if you guys need to ask, you can answer some questions, I can, and then I have a few things at first.
Nope. Um I was just gonna ask about the high usage check on the water for the Dexter Museum. Is that something they just saw high bill or do we?
Yeah, um. She was concerned. Then we come to find out later they had a running toilet. Just wanted to make sure that they were right back in place. These are.
But it was strictly a high bill or?
Yeah, it's just a higher bill because they had another, like a big toilet. Biggest misconception when everybody even, they think of the toilet running, they always say it couldn't have been that much, because it could be like twenty thousand gallons of water.
Oh, yeah.
But when it's running twenty-four seven, you don't catch it.
Yeah.
So that's the biggest thing I tried to explain to everybody.
Yeah. Thank you.
I get, we get many of those.
Right?
Um I got a couple, I'm sorry. What happened in the mailbox on Palmer? Did somebody hit that?
So they're going around the leaf machine, it caught the edge of it.
What did, what happened?
Leaf machine.
Oh, the leaf machine.
Boom.
Okay. And I see your average water used for the weeks is was a third of a million? What do we usually do in the summer? One point?
No, so summer, when I first started, was around one, one point two.
One point two million.
And we put the, well, they put it on before I got here, they put the restrictions on.
Right.
Irrigation, and once it's gone down, getting that edge around. Even if it hits seven hundred thousand, then I started going out and having the guys go out in the morning, and then that's when they go and notify people that they, you know.
It, it just amazes me, there's such a difference, one million gallon difference between months, and it all going on the water. I mean, on the lawn. Uh emergency shut-off request on Baker?
Yeah, there's a city corner from Mug and Bob's, there's a little kind of apartment complex.
Okay.
So they turned the, they went to fix uh something inside, and when they turned the valve, they went to turn it back on, they did turn it back on.
Uh who's a contractor with the right-of-way permit? Uh four above sewer.
Four above sewer, you said?
Above the sewer headline.
About six, six, four. Six balls ahead.
Just says right-of-way permit, not with contractor, but right-of-way. Under staff meeting, clean filter building.
Oh, I, I, I'm just trying to remember which one it was, because I've done a couple of different ways. Um I think it was something to do with uh T T and where they were gonna be and where they're, or no, actually, it wasn't this, so take that back, this was a cable up on um Albert. And where they were gonna be born at.
Uh uh power cable, gas cable?
Excuse me, cable, cable, like a.
Oh, TV cable. And uh what was the result of this Eagle onsite review? These guys are less than responsive, I found. What was the result of this eagle onsite review? These guys are less than responsive, I found.
We got a good review, actually, everything went really well.
Yeah, I'm surprised because they're, they're hot and cold.
Yeah, they, they actually really, to be honest with you, um, we've gotten a lot of good things out of, from us. Um, they use us as an example sometimes with other communities and stuff because we stay on top of things.
Is it maybe because we're more prepared or more?
I think that's a lot to do with it.
Oh, did you get the kitty cat out of the storm pipe?
I don't wanna know, I don't wanna know.
So we did what we could, uh, but i- at the end of the day, it got in there, it's gonna get back out. It's not like it was a small little storm drain.
Right.
This is a big open end drain that they could get out, so and I think it was more afraid of us than anything, so it didn't wanna come, but I hadn't heard anything different.
Alright, I, I just found that humorous. Uh, what was the outcome of uh Nubco and her IPP permit? They're one of my favorite people.
So we moved them um. From their suspended solids and VODs uh to doing basically a once a week type testing to. And their phosphorus because their levels were higher, we moved them to every time that they discharge, they have to test for phosphorus now. And we went from like six month to eight, three month.
Good, I need, I need tight control on them guys, they really screw up the. Digestors when they uh, when they dump.
Yeah, and actually, one of the things that I was gonna talk about, I tried to explain to. Last meeting, the sewer meter you were asking about, so what it is, is that they have water that comes in, it relates to anybody else and.
Sure.
That, that registers both water and sewer.
Right.
They're gonna bring the water in to do their, it's not domestics for the brewing.
Right.
And then all that waste goes to canyon system outside.
Right.
Okay, and then, then they, they discharge that into the system, so that's how they find out how much sewer they actually did.
Oh, yeah, but it has super concentrated.
Yeah, it is, well, they, and that's why they do it, that because of that system, they're a little hold back in their tanks and do a little that time instead of just like you said. It's just uh disrupting our whole system.
Okay. Yeah, them guys, I hate it when they, when I read the lab reports and it just goes. And then you gotta readjust everything and the state wants to go at us and.
Yeah, and they're um.
Just go.
It's been a long time coming and we're, we're honing this in now, they, they have a guy that's, that's. Seems very interested more than what the others seem to uh, as far as, you know, taking care of the canyon system, how it works. Um, we're trying to push them to get their own little small lab, go on.
Alright.
Do stuff in-house, so that's their biggest problem is getting it to live, because there's timeframes.
Right, right, okay, well, I guess that steps in the right direction.
Thank you.
Wow. It's not a question, I just wanna say, I know we had a lot going on around town between Friday and Saturday with the tree lighting and the holiday hustle and. Just wanna thank you and your team for that work and um, I think, I mean, I was out for both of those things or watching. And everybody seemed to have a good time and it went great and that's in no small part because of what you guys do.
Appreciate that, I love it when you guys say something good.
Thank you for that comment. Zach?
Out of curiosity, we don't own the bridge, do we need to get blessing of the road commission when we hang things on it?
Wait, I mean, we, we, uh, this, 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 as far as I am aware, we never have, we've never had any complaints about it.
Okay.
Well, can I ask one more question?
Sure.
You guys talk about hanging the holiday lights on a bridge, but as known under consent agenda and our bills and payroll, there was a payment to the lion for hanging lights on the bridge?
This is for, for, for the material. Uh, just for the material.
Oh, I see. I didn't know they went out there as a volunteer there.
Anything else, Tim?
Um, yep, so given, given the, something else about the leaves because of the, because of the snow, the lights. Um, everything's going on with the, the, the tree lighting and then the hustle this weekend, uh, they got a little bit behind, but uh, they're trying to make up for it today. Open everything wrapped up by tomorrow. The uh biotech is done, they're out playing. Um, so they're away from the treatment plant, um, we did get the generator from the fire department over to the treatment today. Um, so we have that on site, hopefully we can find some information about maybe getting this building and that generator down the road. Um, and then the FRP. That we've been waiting for is now getting installed into the uh treasurer filter room.
Questions? You got snowplows put on?
Oh, yeah, we're ready to go.
We're ready to go, we got salt in the dome or?
We have a lot of salt.
Okay.
From last year, so. We had, we didn't, we had to get so much here and we, we took it all. We were lucky enough, we got in. In old years past, they've had to divert some of it over to the county for a little bit and then go back and pick it up.
Okay. Any other questions for Tim? Thank you for being here, appreciate your report. Uh, next up is the report for the community development manager. I see Michelle is online. Hi, Michelle.
Good evening, council, how's everyone doing?
Very good, you?
I'm fine, thank you. Okay, you've got my report in the packet. I know it's a long one, but uh let me know if you've got any questions before I go into verbal updates.
Hold on. Go ahead, go ahead.
Wanted to ask you about this annexation policy, I'm assuming it's the one on page fifty. Well, it was all yellow highlighted here?
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Uh, this is a draft.
Of course, yeah.
No, that's what's currently in your ordinance, in your master plan.
Oh, it's in there now?
Yeah.
It's in there now, it's.
It's in the ordinance or the master plan?
I'm sorry, I did not hear you, Mr. Semiferal.
I, I just asked if it was in the zoning ordinance or the master plan, I think Justin just said master plan.
It's the master plan, yeah.
Okay, um, I was, yeah, I, I can see a couple of things I'd probably. Readdress, I don't know, that kinda probably pretty basic, but I, I found this point number seven, it all silly city utilities must be. Are extended or ultimately brought into the jurisdiction of the city of Dexter, I think that should be number one. I mean.
We can certainly reorder them in any way that you would like.
I mean, that gives the applicant, you know, they don't have to read, oh, I can do this, I can do, oh gee, I gotta come in. So they should, they should know that from the onset, I mean, when I talk about somebody coming in, that's the first thing I tell them. You gotta be part of town, we don't supply it outside of town.
Whenever anybody asks about annexation, it is one of the very first things we let them know. That extension of water sewer um does require the property to be brought into the city. And, and it has to be contiguous, so if there are parcels between that wouldn't want to be, uh, Mr. Tal. Um, those parcels would need to become, come in because we can't create um islands. The law doesn't allow us to.
Yeah, that was my main concern, I, I'm looking at your report here too, it looks like. Uh, we did a fair amount in twenty-four according to your quarterly, but. It seemed like twenty-one, twenty-two was. Or twenty, what is it, twenty-one, twenty to twenty-one was just so much higher. Is that because of COVID and everybody had a lot of money or they were home or?
So which years specifically, Mr. Talon?
New construction and I'm looking at additions, interior remodel. And all the numbers there.
Okay, so um.
Maybe that's not, maybe.
Things, twenty-two, twenty-three was a little bit slower in certain areas. Twenty-one, twenty-two, um, that would, that would basically be. Uh, I'm gonna say midway COVID, where twenty-twenty-one. Was basically the beginning of COVID, so twenty-three was coming out of it. And um twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, it, we are out of the pandemic, um, but. Um, um, the economy was um, the, the, things are costing more. Um, interest rates were higher, especially at the beginning of this year. So, um. And with this holiday season, things have dropped off.
Right, right. I noticed that our uh. Final zoning compliance is dropped almost by half.
Mm-hmm.
Previous year, is that because everybody's all done?
Um. Anybody that hasn't gotten a preliminary, I'm sorry, anybody that's gotten a preliminary but hasn't gotten a final. Will still need to be coming in and those will roll over into twenty-five. Um, but there will be, there's probably going to be a small slowdown um in the third and fourth quarter.
Yeah, it just shows like, uh, you know, I'm just looking at the bottom of the, you know, on page thirty-six.
Mm-hmm.
Last year, this year's thirty-eight, last year was sixty-seven, you know, before they had fifty-six, fifty-three, fifty-five.
Yeah.
I just, that's all I really noticed at the end.
Yeah, and when you go down to the very bottom on um page thirty-seven, um. The total number of permits um are, are down um. From the previous fiscal year, but uh, the one before that, it's a, it's a constant up and down.
Yeah, I'm just always trying to look for trends to see if I can. See stuff that's there. But yeah, it's, it's interesting, so.
Mm-hmm.
Do you have any hogger peddler permits?
I don't really keep track of the hogger peddler permits, that's something that is done um. Um, through Justin's office, I know it's on here, but I can. Work with him to um log it, but we really don't get a lot of hogger peddler permits.
I guess if it becomes an issue, I can certainly address it later on, it's just a curiosity.
Absolutely.
And let's see here, so. You have any comments on this uh annexation thing you brought before us?
Um, the only comment I would, would make is what I've stated in my uh report. Um, and it's based on um, um. Comments that have been made about our annexation policy and maybe um wanting it worded differently. The criteria, the, the nine different criteria may be fine, but the, the preamble, if you will. Um, um, I think is the, is the um. Portion that gives some of council some angst, so just provide me some. Feedback on it and we can massage it so that um. Everybody is comfortable with the policy.
Go ahead, yeah. Sorry. Um, uh, so. And there's parts of the master plan or the zoning ordinance, I don't know it all by heart or. Have it all committed to memory, so when we look at these sections. Tend to, you know, take a more of a look at the particular one. I think the sentiment that's being expressed in this. In, in the entire thing. I mean, frankly, I disagree with all of it. Um, I mean, just from the very start, it says from time to time and under mutual consent between the city of Dexter and adjacent townships. Municipal boundaries of the city may expand. We don't do expansion of the city based on discussions with the township. We do expansion of the city if it's appropriate through discussions with adjacent landowners. We, I mean, I can't recall a time ever that Webster or SIO township came to us and say, hey, we'd like you to consider annexing this land. They just don't do that, I mean, if anything, it's just say from time to time. At the request of adjacent landowners. You know, the sea of just Dexter would consider um expanding the boundaries. Also, some of the wording, like the next line is municipal expansion of the city boundaries will typically occur. In relation to a corresponding extension of sewer and water facilities. I mean, it's not typically, it's. If we're going to annex, you will get on water and sewer, it's, it's not a, it's not a typical thing where sometimes it happens and sometimes it doesn't. In exceptional situations. The going on through it, designed to serve the city, the water and sewer systems were designed to serve the city property within the present boundaries of the city. That's not correct. When the water, wastewater treatment plant was designed, it was set up with areas outside of the city. Taken into consideration, including Bates Farms, for instance, and some other areas. Um. Just going through some of these other things. Um, I agree with what Ray said, we do need to restate and make it primary that. Annexation is not available without connection to the water and, and sewer, that's always been the policy, it should be. Reflected in the um master plan as well. Um. And that needs to be reflected on all of the different items that are on there as well. Um. I mean, some things like. Item three says the city shall examine the environmental impacts of any municipal service extent, expansion. I don't know if the city's supposed to examine that or if the applicant's supposed to examine that. I mean, I think the applicant should have a role in that. I think a lot of these for the city, what the city, we're, we're putting requirements on ourself. To. When somebody else comes to us, and I don't think we wanna do that, I think these should be made and. Or should say the applicant, whoever it might be, should be the one that's doing that. Um. And for the city shall consider effects of the transportation system, I'm not sure we've ever. Done anything like that, I don't recall ever looking at transportation and how it affects with we, when we looked at annexation.
It's, it's the roads, it's roads, it's not, it's not like public transit or rail or things like that.
No, I understand, but what I'm saying is the, the site where the Pelham is right, is planned right now, I don't recall us. Having a transportation study, I mean, when we talked with Mr. Lutton, we haven't talked about transport. We've never talked about the impact on traffic in Dexter crossings or if there has to be an uh access road from Baker or. I mean, the only traffic we've talked about is construction traffic. The. Going on through down further, um. In number seven, it talks about. Any area the city utilities are extended, but ultimately brought under the jurisdiction of the city of Dexter. It's not ultimately, it's will be brought under this jurisdiction of the ci- city of Dexter period, not ultimately. That implies that it could be sometime in the future. This includes, but does not limit to control, planning and zoning, joint planning commission permitted, maybe established as part of the agreement. Uh. I think that with regards to four twenty-five agreements, joint planning commission, all those types of things, those are all. Uh. Tools of last resort. I mean, if somebody says I want water and sewer because I wanna do development and I can only do that in the city, then they should become part of the city. The problem with doing the four twenty-fives and the other things like that is that. While they're considered to be cooperative. Either the city or the residents of that four twenty-five end up paying the price of that cooperation. You know, it happened in, in all the four twenty-fives that we had before we became a city. Every single person covered by those was paying taxes to SIO Township or Webster Township. Do not get any services, I mean, literally not get any services. That's the village provided fire service, water and sewer, zoning. The only thing that they did was assessing and we paid for that essentially by paying for the, you know, the ten, the one percent that goes on to the tre- treasurer bill. So we were not getting anything for those taxes and the townships. I mean, if I was a township, yeah, I'd set up huge four twenty-five agreements because I wouldn't have to do anything, but I'd get all kinds of revenue from it. And so there's. That should be our last resort because, and. It has to be a way that you're not penalizing the people that you're bringing into the community in the future at the, at their expense and. In order to benefit the rest of the, the city, at least when we became a city, we ended up taking that. Amount that was owed to Webster at the time and it ended up becoming a city obligation instead of being an individual. Um, individually property owner uh. Obligation. So I, I understand what you're saying and I, I don't agree with, with the intent or the uh. The tone or the things that are suggested is potentially as being optional and not mandatory. I think it needs to be that, first of all, if you want water and sewer, you need to be annexed in. Second of all, here's the requirements and the things that a land. Landowner outside of the city would have to do in order to, to, to start and go through that process. Lastly, would be potentially a joint situation and or working with the surrounding townships. And we've seen that in spades, I mean, we, we tried to work with SIO, we said, let's get together, let's figure out how to do this, let's do this jointly. And what they ultimately came to is they passed a resolution at their board that said. We don't wanna work with you at all, come back to us when you tell us. we don't want to work with you at all. Come back to us when you tell us what you're gonna do with the landowner. That's literally what they said. I mean, even though this is what's in our master plan, the feedback that we're getting from at least SIO Township is we don't want to have anything to do with you. You tell us when you're ready to, when you're ready to have discussion because you're ready to go forward with an annexation. But at that point, we're all done. I mean, if we get to the point where we're doing the annexation, I I don't know what the conversation would be at that point, except whether they say, yeah, we agree, go ahead and do it, or no, we don't agree. We're gonna fight you at the boundary commission. So I I think, I just think it needs to be reworded in a way that puts the city's interest first and doesn't put the idea of mutual agreement version.
Why did you ever end up?
Uh, yeah, it's not a question for Michelle. It's just a couple of things follow up on what Joe was saying. Maybe it's because I'm sitting across from you now, Joe. I'm like, I have things. Um, I I could be wrong, but I'm pretty sure that when we looked at the Pelham, Carlisle Warpman and maybe O H M even gave us some feedback on traffic studies. I mean, it wasn't like a technical traffic study that we did, but it wasn't like we were just ignoring it. And I'm not, I'm pretty sure that's not what you meant, but it is what it sounded like you said.
At the time of annexation.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure that, because you, that was sort of a blanket statement that was just put out, and I I just want to make sure the community is clear that we did look at that.
Absolutely. As part of the planning process, we absolutely do. But think about the discussions we've had with citizens that we've said to them. This property was annexed in almost ten years. You know, all those things that we're talking about, about what's the potential effect of that. They, those questions should be answered at the time it gets annexed.
Sure, I totally agree with that. I just wanted to make sure for for transparency and clarity for everybody. Um, and this is uh same with this comment too. I mean, ultimately, I guess that's how that's one way to interpret what SIO did, but I think it's kind of a little bit too negative of way to interpret the conversations we had with SIO. So I just, having been in those meetings with SIO, I just wanted to sort of from my perspective, it was less of a get out of here and more of a, well, we talked about it and.
Master plan uh is a policy document, correct? It's not a regulatory document.
Correct. It it sets the 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 foundation, if you will, for building those regulations and zoning ordinances. You're right.
And my experience has been oftentimes in annexations, the township will not consider annexation or at least allowing a friendly annexation if it doesn't get some, something back in four twenty five. Has that been your experience too?
Um, it, my experience has been all over the board. Um, it really does depend on what the relationship is between the two communities, so. But most townships nowadays are more, um what's the word I'm looking for? More astute than in the past? And, excuse me, um, probably wouldn't support or aren't likely to without some sort of cooperative agreement. But like Joe said, or Mr. Summer Farrow said, it doesn't have to be the first tool you pull out of your toolbox.
So my recollection is that the direction this the body gave when we were drafting our master plan was we do not want to even talk about a hostile or unfavorable annexation, which is my recollection, the genesis of a lot of the information here that says we're not going to do it unless the the other local unit gives a thumbs up. Is that your recollection?
Yes, that is, that is accurate.
All right, and for findings for making decisions, which even though this isn't a regulatory document, they are kind of findings. My general experience is that the findings are always the planning commission Z B A. The legislative body shall find these things are true. I read these policy statements as something similar that says the body must find these things to be true. It doesn't mean it's up to the body or to the applicant or the township or anyone else to do that. It's, they provide the information that we deem necessary in order to determine whether or not those findings are true. Is that your understanding of how it works? I'm good, thank you.
Justin?
Should, should, should we just bring this back as a discussion item?
We can. I I, you know, I think I think my suggestion would be if people have thoughts on what it should say different than this, maybe we take a chance, a shot at writing. Whether that's you or somebody that, you know, if you got it, if you, if you, I mean, I happen to agree with a lot of what's been said here. I I don't think the, I think the mutual consent in the first paragraph has led us to believe that we don't have a decision-making process unless somebody else agrees, and I don't think it's written that way anymore. But that's not being interpreted. I agree, it's not supposed to be hostile, but not really hostile when the certain property has been talked about for twenty some years and considered for things. Um, I I just don't, I, I think the power, I think it needs to be adjusted. That being said, I'm happy to have it as a special item. You know, I would encourage anybody who wants to change words, shall, will, whatever. Maybe you send this out to us in a word document and let us all play with it and put different versions together.
We can do that.
One other item on number two, there's a sentence in there that says the leapfrogging of township areas to provide municipal services creating an island within a township will not be considered by the city. We've had a couple of times that we've talked about actually those specific potential situations. One was Corman Farms. Another one was that if with the sewer line coming down uh Dexter Chelsea Road, once the water is extended over or under the river, that um, the water could be extended up Dexter Chelsea Road. We could have a number of properties that would be along Dexter Chelsea Road that may not be immediately adjacent. I don't, I don't know if on Dexter Chelsea Road it would create an island per se unless it was on the west side of the road. Um, the east side of the road, I think everything pretty much borders back to um the city, although I guess as you get closer to Parker Road, it probably doesn't. Um, probably gets blocked off by Bates Farms, but um we have, we have talked about specifically situations where actually that would happen. Um, and again, I mean, given that you know, I would think something along the lines of we would try not to create that situation, but if it's in a way that we can provide water and sewer to them, we already have talked about two of that, so.
When we talk about leapfrogging, we're talking about skipping over parcels and creating islands. And Corman Farms was kitty corner to the Cedars, just like the Cedars is kitty corner to um Westridge. So they are contiguous from the state law pros- um uh perspective. If Corman, I'm sorry, if Cedars was not kitty corner to Corman Farms, um, let's say it didn't exist, then we wouldn't have been able to have the conversation with Corman Farms because to go from Westridge to Corman would have been the leapfrog.
Well, in fact, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's state law that bars non-contiguous annexations.
That's correct.
So for the office of the great seal of the state, they would kick us out the door.
You'd have to include all the area in between if you're gonna propose it.
Correct. And we would do the same thing if people want to connect um water going up Dexter Chelsea Road. They would have to make sure, so let's say, let's say Haley McCannical decided they wanted to come into the city. Not that they are never had that conversation, but I want to give you the visual. Every property going back toward um um Main Street would have to be part of that um in order to create that contiguousness. Excuse me.
Well, unless they back up to Milk Creek.
Correct, correct. But again, to your point, somewhere before Parker Road, that does end.
Right, and they could, but so essentially some be on the west side of the road. I'm sure that's not north south or north south road, but on the western part of it would have the same issue.
Yeah, the the, my concern with four twenty fives is they aren't always written very well. We have one with SIO Township that brought to the high school into the city on a defiant term and it expires. And there's no mention of what happens when it expires, other than there's going to be sewer in the ground outside the city or the village. You know, and that's a poorly written agreement. Which is why to your point, Joe, it's straight annexation is a, is a, is a better process for us because it's all coming in. At least from my perspective, but I I I think, Justin, I like your idea. Why, why don't we make this a discussion item at a meeting in January? Um, and then uh if if, Michelle, if you could get the um the word version of this out to everybody so they can look at it, adjust it, play with it, whatever, propose other language for council to consider, maybe we can come back to the topic.
Yep, we can do that.
I'm going to cut off everybody. If someone wants to make more comments, you certainly can, but I like the idea.
The mention of the the high school in the well there did strike a bit. Um, my understanding is our sewer and or and water ordinances do allow council to allow folks to continue to have private water and sewer. Uh, that came up when the canoe livery and brew house was coming in. My correct collection is correct, and the fact that they wanted to run it on their own well, meant that they had to limit the size of the building because they weren't able to ride sprinkling. That, that correct memory?
I got a real concern about this recent state legislation and how it's gonna affect this annexation policy, the the way this thing's worded.
What page do you have, man?
Thirty one. You know, it's seriously, you know, we have to uh consider local housing. And uh, I'm assuming it says local housing needs, I don't know, I can't, I can't just mean that town. Locally, I'm assuming. And then it the diverse population, major uh affordability, attainability, age is characteristics. And uh years ago when they were doing the master plan in Webster, Westridge was master plan as a mobile home park because they needed to include that in their master plan. I'm just wondering about, this is a I know the master plan is a, I I don't want to say suggestion, what do you call it? So it's not necessarily, I mean, it's there to give you direction. It's not the law.
It's not the law, correct.
But uh, I I find it interesting the state wants to tell me what to do locally. I just hate that.
Wait, wait till you see the the other bills that just got made. This is vanilla.
Yeah, but Ray, you know, my my read of that without trying to overanalyze is, you know, we we have we have a community that's largely built out. There's not very many vacant parcels.
Right.
Okay, you know, the idea that we consider uh, the transformation of single parcels into multifamily, that fits the considering local housing needs. The idea that we're exploring potential, whatever you call it, annexation or four twenty five agreements to add housing, those all fulfill that requirement. I don't see this as being a cumbersome at least the way it's written. I don't want the state to be able to say because, because of this legislation, you might have to consider annexing in to provide these certain types of housing.
No, I, that's not the way that we're interpreting at this point. And I don't see the, I don't really see the legislature going that far with townships. I think the retribution against them doing that would be too great. Um, but stranger things have happened.
There's actually been a bill introduced that would basically stop all annexations that haven't already previously been agreed to. There's a lot of townships.
Oh, yeah. All right, I reckon.
Other questions for Michelle?
Hi, Michelle. Um, I'm wondering, I have a question and then um a comment. Um, my question is about the welcome center. Do we have any update or basically the the restrooms and welcome center? Maybe that's a question for Justin.
So, you know, so the city council um has listed as priority for this budget to uh explore the conversion of eighty fifty into uh polygraph rooms and a welcome center. Um, it is included in the budget. The development of the RFP to solicit proposals to design the the welcome center um is something that um I anticipate working on in in the next couple of months.
All right, thank you. Um, and the comment I have is I want to thank you for um the business networking event um on uh it was a wonderful event. Um, many of our um downtown business owners were there. Um, it was such a heartwarming to see the the sense of community between them and the ability to go around and have conversations and and have fun. I very much enjoyed it. I think by the time everybody got to the last spot, they even stayed a couple hours over the what, the actual event was over and um it was really lovely to see. Thank you for um arranging that and all your work on that.
Appreciate it. I have to give credit to Ann Arbor Spark and um Dexter Area uh Chamber of Commerce. Um, they provided the budget and uh the event was was very well attended. Um, everyone had a good time. I'm really pleased with uh this being the first time we've tried to do a networking in the evening and specifically one um geared toward downtown. Thank you for being able to attend. Um, I look forward to doing more in the future. And I hope that um we'll be able to entice um more people to come.
You're welcome. Other questions from Michelle?
Okay, we'll be moving on down the agenda. I think unless anybody has something to add from one of the boards or committees on day three, we're down to city manager report.
Or, um, so uh one of the few updates uh that I have is that um Burman started uh our annual winter uh tree trimming uh today. Um, they're starting on Alpine and they're working on a number of the streets uh in the downtown neighborhoods uh this winter. I'm joining us on Saturday um to put together and distribute the luminaries at the at the DPW. Does, does anybody have any questions for me?
The pickup is the same day, right? Fourteenth?
Correct, yeah, so so so.
Your email update may have had one say the fourteenth and the pickup is the sixteenth.
Um, for the DPW opening, um, you had the the city's newest hire. We were departing December ninth to accept a job at City of Brighton. Did we get any feedback about, is that a pay issue, responsibility issue?
So um, we we think that uh his ultimate goal um is to be in water sewer. Um, and he actually came to us from working part-time with the city of Brayton. So he's, he's returning to the city of Brayton. Um, without, without I mean, maybe Tim has some some additional thoughts, but it it sounds like um, you know, he had friends, had contacts there that that he enjoyed working with.
Okay, thank you.
Was he the gentleman we played for CDL training?
And and per the union contract, he'll have to um pay pay some of it back.
Yeah, I mean, it's twelve bills. Nothing else. And what about this uh to 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 once again, here's my favorite people eagle. Water and sewer ordinance.
Have we got any follow-up emails over the past or or are we moving any? I see O A C M has provided some recent other items they want to add. This is all dated.
Yeah, it's it's been a little while, right? Since uh, since we've come back to to the water sewer ordinance. Um. Courtney actually submitted a draft of the water sewer ordinance to uh, Deb Snell before she left. Um, and we were following up with her every couple of months and you know, no update, no update, no update, no update. Um, and so we we. Finally got them to to provide comment. Basically, the comment was um. Yeah, you you go ahead, you know, adopt it and then submit it to us for review. And. Then a little bit later, that 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 feeling from them may may have changed that they want to see it first again. Um, so I we we have some follow-up to do with them. Um, but in in the interim, um, we followed up with O H M to get to get some feedback. Uh, we re-reviewed it with uh, Tim and Eric. Um, got got some additional feedback from them. So it's something that we need to come back around to and and.
Yeah, I find it very disheartening. We extend all this effort and we get no response on something they're mandating.
Hmm.
And if I get fined for them not checking it.
It 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 uh. I don't think it made anybody happy to to have it sitting there without. Um.
I mean, they seem to be capable, but other ends are totally incapable. Uh, he he they just had a great meeting with their discharge. Wasn't it discharge or?
Yeah, they're. And Ray, I mean, you're hitting it right about it. They're so we do lots of certain things and that's probably one of the things. Some things uh, for some reason this, and I, you know, I do water segment inside, so I see a lot of, you know, what I see in here, you know, like smaller level. But it's amazing on how they expect you to have all the stuff in the world and ready to go. But they're they're lacking. And we just talked to us now a couple of weeks ago when she was here with that I P P stuff. Um. When she basically said, which Justin was just saying earlier about, uh, you know, go ahead and move forward to look at it. So we've spent a lot of time.
That's asinine. That's so backwards. It's not even funny.
It is. And I don't agree. I'm not believing in my creed, but it's something that we've been accustomed to because it's. So um, we try our best just to keep up with everything we're supposed to in the role and and this is something we've tried to do before, but like you said, it's it's boring. And we we sat down for Eric and myself, you know, Courtney, Dustin, and sat down, went over that whole thing, adjusted everything, so. But it's uh, she was out, like I said, a couple of weeks ago, and that's she reiterated what we had to say, so I'm I'm hoping. See what that was.
Zach?
Since this scenario I of law not um, exposed to on a daily. Uh, my understanding that state requires their blessing for these ordinances, correct? Perhaps, okay. Perhaps we could try the lack of negative confirmation is affirmation. So we. Maybe we could talk with Mr. Monzel. Submit the thing, say, we're sending this. If we don't hear back from you in thirty days, we're going to assume that you approve of this.
Hmm.
Just so we're not sitting around twiddling our thumbs for another five years.
Yeah.
I I don't know if it's going to stick, but it's at least they're on notice and we can have something that we can wave up in the air and say.
Yeah, wish you someone could push a button. I don't know if we can contact up in the. Date to, I don't know if we can contact anyone up in the state.
Well, that's probably the truth. They're vulnerable.
Yeah, I know. Well, I I don't think they have a master plan.
Justin, the floor still yours?
Only if there's questions.
Okay, I'll keep moving then. Um. As we head into the holidays and look towards twenty twenty-five, um. I plan or hope that you'll want to have some goal-setting sessions in the first quarter of twenty twenty-five. Throwing out a few dates. Um, like to hear back from people around the first of the year. If any of those work better or worse for you, I know staff is also looking at them. Um. They'll give me a feedback or if another weekend needs to be the primary, let me know what your availability is so we can get sort of the schedule. Typically, we do them on a Saturday morning. I think it's worked well in the past. Try to keep it between nine and noon and. Go from there. Joe, you gonna handle?
I I was just saying, I looked at the dates a lot. Okay with them. Um, I don't know if you have specifically stayed away from the first and third Saturdays, but.
I figure if if most people are around for the Monday, they're probably around on the Saturday for the council meeting. So I I did it in advance of the council meetings.
Okay.
That was my thought.
Yeah, yeah, I'm good with it.
But again, we could pick other dates that, you know, none of these work, but um.
It's going to be fresh in your mind when you come to the council meeting.
True. So. That's all I had. Uh.
You know what's on your agenda for D A F D yet?
Do I know what's on the agenda?
We we get the package Monday or Tuesday before.
Yeah, the bu- the budget is the biggest thing. I mean, or the spending plan as we refer to it.
What time is that? Seven, six?
It's six o'clock on Thursday.
Fill up at desk town hall?
They're in Webster, Webster right now.
Oh, Webster three.
Yep. We should probably, we will probably also do um. You know, nominations for board, treasurer, secretary, that type of thing. That's usually the.
Organization.
Yeah, December event. But the biggest thing is the spending plan.
Hmm.
Okay, uh, unless anybody has a a report to make under council member reports, I'm going to flip over to page three. To consent that just has uh, two items on it. Now the bills and payroll.
Yeah, I move. I move. We approve those two consideration items on the consent agenda. One, bills and payroll in the amount of two hundred and twenty thousand fifteen dollars and eighty-seven cents. And two, twenty twenty-five city council and committees meeting calendar.
Thank you. Is there a second?
One second.
Thank you. Please call the vote to approve the consent agenda.
All day? Yes. No?
Yeah, yeah, yes.
Hubbard? Yes. Michelle's?
Yes.
Semi Pharaoh?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. We have no unfinished business. So we're down to item M one. Which is consideration of the amendment of an amendment to the resolution for the purpose of establishing our organizational matters here in the city of Dexter.
We adopted as presented in the packet.
Thank you, Zach. Motion by Michelle's. You have a second?
I'll second.
Right, Joe. Thank you, Joe. Um, go ahead, Joe.
No, I was just going to ask about Z B A. I didn't know.
Yeah, yeah. So when when I spoke to um. Everyone, two of you actually. Uh. Showed an interest in Z B A and I did not get it worked out before. We put the packet together, so I had Justin show Ray and Juan, the two of you, which is why I put you together to see if you wanted to fight over it.
I I I don't, I mean, I. No, I don't. I don't need to do that. I just, you know, was offering if.
Okay, so then then we'll Zach and Joe, if it's okay, then we'll let that be. Ray? You're okay with that as part of the motion?
Yes.
And we do need to correct um. One, Sonam's last name under cap dark.
Were there any other quickies?
And the and the only thing that else that I was aware of, but I didn't, I didn't have a solution. The here and River watershed council meeting is, I believe, five thirty on Thursdays.
I don't know what day of the week it is, but I just can't be back in Ann Arbor at five thirty on any day of the week, like weekday.
So I don't, it's the fourth Thursday of the month. And I don't have somebody currently to take was previous role in that.
Where's it at?
It's, where's the media?
Huh?
It's at um, their office on Main Street in Ann Arbor. Eleven hundred Main Street, that's me.
Was it down by fourteen or the other one?
The old train station.
Oh, it's the old train. Oh, okay.
Train station. What train station?
Oh, yeah, they've moved, haven't they? Oh.
Okay, the last meeting I went to was.
I think it's along the river, right along Main Street on the.
Okay, that's not.
My 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 point is, we don't, Juan's name is on this. And and if can't resolve who it is, I'd ask that you would just approve it with keeping Juan's name there until we figure out who could go. I don't know the rules of that board to whether a staff member could go if if council can't. I hate to have staff to have to do something in an after-hours capacity more than you're already doing. Um, so. Maybe we have to share that one a little bit. I need to, we need to, I need some help contacting them to find out. If we can have that be a shared position or whether we have to have a specific designated. We were lucky for so long. Paul wanted to do it, enjoy doing it and did it that never had to fill it till by you volunteered the last time around.
Yeah, and I would really enjoy doing it, but I just can't be there.
Understood.
Um, and Ray, I'm not trying to say, you know, take that from me and switch back. I could do Z B A if you wanted one less responsibility and just as an idea, so. But I'm fine with approving it as is for now and figuring it out later.
Oh, what did you say, Farah?
And they have their own parking, so it's not like you have to. Figure out where to.
Okay, well, let's let's keep that moving. I just wanted to acknowledge that 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 rule needs to be clarified. And I think because of you and I can help get in touch with them and figure out, we'll bring that back. Zach?
Yes, we'll point out that Mr. Schlaff is not here and we should customarily appoint him to every committee.
We'll see how. We did, we did put him on the utilities committee to um, Jamie's spot there. Okay. So. Okay, please call the vote to, please call the vote to approve the motion with the um. Recognizing Ray as the zoning board of appeals representative.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
All day? Yes. Semi Pharaoh?
Yes.
Tell?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the motion, Zach. Um, moving to the side of M two is consideration of council rules.
Move we adopt the rules as presented.
Second. By Michelle, second by Senator. Thank you. Again, if somebody has something that they want to bring back. You can have the rule that asks that you. Type it up ahead of time so we can see it one meeting prior to taking action. So for the purpose of this. Get these in place and uh, if somebody wants to change something later, we can talk about it. Wow.
I don't want to change anything right now. I'm just with that in mind, is this something that we could potentially talk about at one of our work sessions too? If there's something that comes up. I'm not saying I have anything.
That's probably the best time is to talk about under goals and such. I have no problem with it. Okay, please call a vote.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Hubbard? Yes. Semi Pharaoh?
Yes.
Tell?
Yes.
All Day? Yes. Yeah.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you for that. Uh, new business item seven three is consideration of the twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-eight transportation asset management plan. Why here? I don't know if anyone on the main the motion at this time or.
A movie approved the ten twenty twenty-five twenty transportation ends at.
Motion to approve?
I second.
Okay, my son Pharaoh second by Aldag. Thank you. Okay, discussion or or Joe, you made the motion?
I I was just going to say um. There's a lot there and um. I think it would be good if the streets community took a look at it and just to run through and give feedback to council or they. Thought it was a good idea, also being that there's a lot there over the years, it'd be good to have another couple of weeks to take a look at it and assess it.
You seen this, Justin?
Oh, yeah.
Give me a quick overview. Give me the parts that are in there.
Sure. So uh, I think I think the the page that tells the tale the best is page eighty-two.
What's that?
Uh, page eighty-eighty-two of your packet. Um, so leading up to this year, uh, we're doing a three-year TAMP. Um, and camp essentially, you can replace that with roads plan. Um. Recently, we we got um. Some information from the county who indicated that uh, our roads mileage money might be in jeopardy if we don't have a four-year roads plan. Uh, which. We don't agree with and we're going to be talking to our county commissioner about, but uh. In in an effort to kind of. Jumpstart that effort if uh, if it is required. Um, we moved it up to a to a to a four-year roads plan. So twenty twenty-five is twenty twenty-eight. Um, we. We have focused on and and including in twenty, starting in twenty twenty-four, a mix of fixes with um. Trying to address the fixes that are the most appropriate um, road treatment for the time that we are going to be doing that segment of road. Um, we did a significant roads project this year in twenty twenty-four. And as you may be aware, you know, we did Baker, we did uh, here on farms, we did forest, we did uh, slurry seal and micro surface in Westridge and the industrial park. And all of that led to about a twenty-five percent uh, or we were able to to do a treatment on approximately twenty-five percent of our road network in twenty twenty-four. Um, a lot of that thanks to the slurry seal and the micro surface that that when we're able to do that, it goes a long way. Um, but there, that is not necessarily the appropriate treatment for every road every year. Um, and so the idea with the next couple of years is that we we continue the melanin overlay treatments. We continue um, to focus on crack ceiling, melanin overlay. And then in um, twenty twenty-seven and twenty twenty-eight, we get back to the micro surface treatment. Um, on the roads that um, that we have done recently for for melanin overlay. Um, so that that essentially adds an additional layer of of protection to to those roads that we have done recently. And try and get that longevity out of those. So.
We address the. Worst roads. Is that.
So. Yeah, so so part of part of the. The goal is to keep the good roads good.
Right.
The unspoken piece of that is that you essentially let the the bad roads fall off until you are able to get to them. Um, and so um. Be because those are the most expensive roads. Uh, once they, once they get to the 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 crush and shave, the full reconstruct. Um, the cost of doing though, for the cost of doing those, you can do a significant portion of of other roads.
You can get your percentage.
Right.
Based on road alone.
Yeah, and so so you try and fit those crushing shapes, those those um, full reconstructs in where you can.
Does Hudson get different funding because it's a major road?
Uh, it it is potentially eligible for um, other funding because it is a major road, yes. Um, it 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 isn't required that we use other funding to do that, but.
I'm just trying to.
That is significantly helpful when we're able to to make advantage of that. Um, and so talking about the other funding, um, in twenty twenty, so now that we are a um. Small urban uh, community, so we're probably part of the small urban program for uh, federal funding.
Okay.
Uh, every other year, we're we're going to be eligible for about three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in federal funding, whereas we're getting about three hundred thousand every three years.
Okay.
Um, so our small urban funding is going to be on the even years, so twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-eight, twenty thirty. Um, there is potential for that funding to allow us to do advanced construction.
Okay.
With those dollars. So even though it might be a twenty twenty-eight um, state funding or state budget year, we we might be able to do the project in twenty twenty-seven.
And how does that work money-wise?
Uh, I I I. Yeah, we basically we 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 front it and then we get reimbursed.
Okay, I mean, yeah, it's fine. I don't care how you do it, but.
Yeah.
Get our money for it.
And so um, as a part of that, we're looking at um, Main Street in twenty twenty-six.
Okay.
Uh, which we did strategically because if the.
The roundabout?
To to coincide with the roundabout and that way we're not um, you know, basically shutting down Main Street for a year.
Well, that's always been our theory. Try to do everything at once, so we don't have to come back a hundred times.
Exactly. And and the and try and impact those businesses as little as possible.
One time.
Exactly.
The water, the sewer, the sidewalks, the streets, the gutters, everything.
Yep. Um, and so then uh, in twenty twenty-seven, in addition to our our small urban allocation, we were awarded two hundred thousand dollars through our um, through the normal Watts tip program. Um, whi- which it which is the, you know, three hu- two hundred to three hundred thousand every three years. Uh, we were awarded two hundred thousand for Broad Street in twenty twenty-seven. Our thought is we try and take advantage of that and those dollars and then use the twenty twenty-eight small urban dollars to advance construct. Small urban dollars to advance construct another portion of Broad Street, so we're getting almost all of Broad.
Right.
Done in twenty twenty seven using two pots of federal funding.
Is that a, that a class A road?
It, it, it is a, a, a major uh, road.
Truck route.
That is also a truck route, correct, yep, yep, and so, and that, that.
I'm assuming that. Well, see, tandem is usually up to forty five thousand. Pounds.
Hmm. That, 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 that I'm not super familiar with.
Well, the master of the bridge is going to stop you one way or the other. They're going to have a wait moment on it.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and so then, uh, for. The remainder of the projects, it's trying, trying to do those melan overlay is, um, we tried to fit Dexter and Arbor Road in. Um, and we, we were able to get that in as a micro surface in twenty twenty seven. Um, there are probably sections of it that could be um, melan overlay. Um, but in, because Dexter and Arbor is another one of those roads that um. Would be eligible for federal funding.
Right.
Um, trying to get as much longevity out, out of that as we can until another round of federal funding, funding where we can do a melan overlay. Um, that, 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 that was our, kind of our goal.
Yeah, let's extend it for minimal so that we can really dump on it later.
Hmm. Um, and then in twenty twenty five, um, a- as we were going through. Here on Farms and Dexter Crossing in the last couple of years, uh, we noticed that there's a significant amount of um. Concrete work that needs to be addressed and so our goal was to do a one off. Significant kind of concrete program in, in those two uh, neighborhoods in twenty twenty five. Um, to the tune of a little over uh, three hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
Wow.
This is just a detailed question in twenty twenty seven. For the fourth one down Huron Street, have I completely lost my sense of geography? Since when does Huron Street border Main Street or Cottonwood Lane?
I believe that was supposed to be Hudson.
Okay.
Well, that's why I couldn't. I see everybody on here but me.
Wrong and I'm like looking at it like this, so.
I thought it was that, yeah, because it's Cottonwood Lane.
Yeah, I, I believe it's supposed to be Hudson.
That makes.
Sorry about that.
No, no, that, I don't know why I didn't immediately think that and just say that, but thank you.
Right, um, one final question, what, what's the deal with the road commission and our? Was there buildings of roads in our building of roads? What, what do they, they don't recognize ADA from their perspective or?
Well, well, what was, uh, well, you mean for like uh, the, the, the roundabout project?
Or whatever, is there something we have to share money with?
Yeah, so, so, um.
They feeling slighted or what?
Uh, two, two years ago, uh, the, the road commission asked us for a letter of support for the, the roundabout project.
Right.
And as a part of that, they, they asked us if we wanted to include in their project. Um, the rehabbing of our s- signals and all our signalized intersections. That those would be eligible expenses in their CMAC grant program.
At the roundabout, right, so we're talking.
There, there, there is not, you're, you're, you're correct, so uh, in, in their CMAC, the congestion mitigation and air quality. Federal grant that they applied for, they applied for the full corridor that is Island, Island Lake and Main Street.
Okay.
And so, even though they're, they're looking at doing a roundabout at Dexter Chelsea. They're also looking at doing a right hand turn lane at uh, Dexter Pinkney and Island Lake. But also our signals, bringing our signals onto their system at um, Main and Broad. Baker Meadow View and Dan Hoy.
Okay.
So essentially all the, our, our main signalized intersections. Um. What they didn't know or didn't tell us is that uh, as a part of that. Um, with new ADA right, um, regulations that are going through, all of those intersections have to be brought up to full ADA.
They have funding.
For, eh, for maybe because it's a federal project. And so there are things at each of those intersections that are not ADA current, that, that, that don't meet current ADA or. The proposed ADA legislation. And so there's things like um, level landings um, at Main and Broad from, from like where you. Land for the um, the, the pedestrian crosswalks. Um, things like you have to enter onto grass in order to hit the push button.
Right.
In order for the, for the um, pedestrian signal to activate, um, things like that. And of course, they didn't include that in their CMAC application.
No.
And so now there's. Uh, question of who's kind of going to pay for those things.
What's, what's the else coming?
Uh, three hun- uh, so it's. So it's about. Three hundred and twenty, three hundred and thirty thousand in total, but a portion of that is included. In the Main Street project. Um, budget in twenty twenty six, that is the main from Baker to Mill Creek. The, that um, the main and um, uh, Broad Street intersection.
Right.
Would bring, would bring that up, would, would bring that intersection up to ADA and, and those costs are baked into, into that line. The other three intersections are included in, in um, the uh, ADA improvement line, the, the two hundred and sixty six thousand.
So, it's two seventy five about, three hundred after we count all our ducks or.
It, it's, it's, it's significant.
Yeah, it's like three hundred five thousand.
So, so you're, you're recommending that?
So. I, 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 I think there's still a discussion to be had, um, but.
You've got it included here now.
I, I've got it included in here now, yeah, for, for the, for the purposes of, of, of showing what that's going to cost. Um.
Right.
I, I don't have a whole lot of faith that in going back to the county. And saying, we're not paying, you know, you, you, you guys need to pay for this or find a, find a way to pay for this. I don't have a lot of faith that they're. Going to. And so.
Well, won't that screw up their project?
Well, there, I mean, there's, there's, there's a couple of ways that, that. We go with it, one is we say, we're not paying for it, figure it out and either they do or they don't. If they don't, then it comes back to us to either say, yes, we're, we're going to cover the cost or. That piece of it is dead and. Your, you have to figure out how to make your CMAC project calculations work. Um, the challenge is that as we move forward in our road program. When we get to those intersections and do improvements to those intersections, those AD improvements are going to have to be done at that point. So they're, they, they, they will have to be done at some point, no matter what.
But will the. Will the basic requirements have changed by then again? Because the ones we have are null and void as it is.
They're not null and void, they're just behind what the current standard is.
Yeah, but that's my point, they change the current, they change it all the time. Don't they? I mean, they were acceptable once upon a time, weren't they?
Yes.
Justin, what does the double asterisk mean after Main Street on the twenty twenty six year?
What page do I jump?
I'm right on uh, page three eighty two.
Yeah, yeah, the, the, the main street Baker, Baker to, to Mill Creek. Marcus, do you know what the double asterisk stands for?
Um, yeah, that's just the primary was cut off on the pages, the first note under the section chart, uh, talk about. But if you, if you do the math, normally a federally job is approximately eighty, eighty percent federally, twenty percent local match. If you do the math, I will make it very known.
What, um. Why do we think we need to do a five inch overlay? As opposed to just like, you know, two?
Uh, well, based on the current condition of the road, um, that's what we're recommending, it's probably the main reason on that and I would agree with you. It might feel like a little bit of an overbuild. Um, but because of the impact in the downtown. What we didn't want to do was a thinner overlay that would require us to be back there in seven, ten years to disrupt the businesses again. Big portion of the costs of, of road projects, as you know, is, is um, mobilization in the contractor here. Uh, and traffic control. We really wanted to take advantage of the fact that the roundabout was going to be happening. Picking back off the county's detour plan. Do uh, for the incremental increase in cost of the additional asphalt to buy the lecture ten plus years before we need to get back there. Be disruptive downtown, that was the thing.
When was the project last done, two thousand and ten?
Hey, I think there was a, a. Yeah, it was performed as well, but I, I think there was a, a thinner melon fill in twenty. I want to say twelve to fourteen. Yeah, no, okay. Okay.
I mean, downtown as far as John downtown.
I mean, I, I think that's a. At least a portion of that's a composite pavement, right?
Um, at my knowledge, not until you get past Baker.
Is that where transition is going up the hill? It's all, that's the composite section?
We'll, and we'll double check that, you know, of course, before, as well as the planning. That, and obviously when we get into design, uh, we'll verify both types of things. And the one other, I guess, point to be made about that is based on the recon. Of the Alpine. Um. Alongside the fire station, the worker at the fire station entrance and all that, which will be pulled up work. Just made sense to toss to that sort of piece deal, um, and what was the project that, like I said. Um, get you in and, and out of there, you know, and we disrupted the downtown for a long, long time.
Yeah, I ju- I, I'm just trying to think about what the previous project was there. So if you could bring back.
Yeah, we could. And again, I'll give them the archives a little bit, we can uh, do some research on that and get that information to council or committee.
Um, one other thing, Justin, how are you, I mean, we, we should be trying to utilize. DDA funds for some of the stuff that's in the DDA district and I don't see any mention of that or. Or um, inclusion of that in, in the plan for this.
I, I, I agree, um.
Not that, that has to slow down our adoption of it, either this meeting or the next, whatever it is, but I, I'd like to see some. If that means you need to present this to DDA the same way and talk to them about which ones apply and color coded or. But I think we should, I think we should let them understand what we're doing to the same level so that they can. You know, we, we've hinted, for example, about the, the Alpine that says miscellaneous, whereas miscellaneous right away work. You know, but we've never really described that very well, what that means. I think it's important, Zach, actually. Oh. First. I missed what? No, I had.
No, I did, are you?
You, you were before me.
Yeah, just two quick questions and also I would, I would, I agree with that about the DDA for sure. Um, so sorry if this is ignorant question, but if. What's on the table, if we approve what's on the table, are we committing to those ADA funds for the county to take over those signals?
No.
Okay.
So, 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 so ju- ju- just, just to, to kind of follow up on. What happens next is so, um, well, we're really, I mean, the, the most important part is twenty twenty five.
Okay.
Um. O H M will come back with a proposal to, to do design for twenty twenty five, um, probably for your first meeting in January. Um, and uh, as, assuming that gets approved.
Okay.
Uh, O H M will work on, on uh, the design of the, the twenty twenty five program, which will get that out in early twenty twenty five for. Can, uh, summer twenty twenty five construction.
Okay, and that's, that's kind of what I thought, but as follow up to that, um, well, I, I mean, in theory, not being a. Traffic study person, it might be good for the county to, the road commission to take over those signals. With the caveat that, dude, what did they, did they, I mean, what's their consideration for that signal at the school? I mean, we've talked about that forever and I, I don't need an answer right now by any means, I'm just. As this per discussion progresses, I just want to make sure that that's something that they're. Well versed on and well aware of the issues that we have traffic wise with that before they just start making changes.
So, so I, I, I don't believe that, that they, that we're, that if we go on to the county system, we are granting them the authority to make any changes to. To the timings.
It's just what they pay for the.
It, it's, it's essentially the software that could, that controls the signalization.
So it may give us greater flexibility in the long run?
That's, that's the idea.
Okay, alright, thanks.
Zach. Uh, as, as a footnote, the DDA, if it's going to spend money, it needs to have the project or some reference to that type of project in its plan. So it's, it's, unless it's already in there, it's not going to be a quick cash grab, there's stuff you have to go through that. Um, so my understanding of the. The CMAC project, the county said, hey, you want to work with us, can you give us a letter of support? It's not going to cost you anything. And we signed it. And how recently did they come back and say, yeah, your guys are going to have to drop three big ones on this?
Uh, it's, it's been a couple of months since, since they, they approached us.
Okay, I'm. You said a twenty percent match would be typical for these types of projects. I'd be comfortable doing a twenty percent match and let them figure out, because they didn't come to us, that we wouldn't have been doing this now if we didn't have to for them. Um. And I do have concerns that if we adopted in here, they're going to say, hey, you guys, you, you said, you said you adopted officially that you were going to do the full bit there. Um. See, I did have a follow up question on the five inches, that what's currently under Main Street now, five inches of. Are we mandated as part of these funds to have a certain amount of recycled contents in the asphalt?
Um, no, we're actually limited on how much recycle that, the content you can have.
Okay.
I'm not specification.
And so this project, is it all freshers or some recycle in there?
They're, we can, so, I'm not, a lot, the standard specification allows, um. It's twelve, fifteen percent recycle content, we can write a more restrictive. Spec than that and say, go on and say no recycle, but we can't increase that because then it wouldn't.
I, I would be in favor of zero percent because the heavy traffic there and the fact that they're in really restricted areas, it will, it will, it'll come. Very quickly with that much packed up there, um. Talk to me about the four inches on Carrington, what's happened there that it's, it needs that full depth? Carrington, it's calling for four inches.
That's the cross section that's there now, um, that's a thinner cross section because it's a local street. Um, and it's not the condition of the pavement, the, that's what is appropriate, that, there's been a lot of. I guess discussion over the years about that. Um, because um, doing thinner overlays on, on road that have a. We're calling maybe a significant amount of existing cracking, the um. The frequency and how that cracking uh. Shows itself again, um, is a concern, so even if there's not necessarily a, a significant structural issue, there's a. Um, I guess we want to call it PR component to that and again, when you, we already mobilize. And you're doing a significant amount of driveway repairs and curb repairs that are needed in the neighborhood. To do those properly, you need to cut about two feet out in the road anyways. Um, and the cost of doing patchwork like that is you pay three times per ton what you pay for main line. Uh, so it, it was strategic in that, that street had enough concrete, um, areas identified. And uh, you know, there's a trade off, but we think it's, it's, it's the right project and again, it gets you that extra. Lifecycle, so every, every one of these treatments is. Has a, essentially annual cost, so the model, the, the cost of doing it and how long you expect that treatment to last. The ones that have a higher upfront cost. Uh, you're getting more lifespan out of the sort of the cost of the year, it might be very similar.
It, it's, and so you said it had a four inch profile right now, so it's not really a, a melan overlay, it's a remove the.
Take all the asphalt out. Um. From the other work we've done in that neighborhood, there, we've done very little uh, base repair, hasn't been any issues, many issues with the, the stone under the pavement. Um, so getting that road pavement out, do proof roll, check for any soft areas that need spot repair on the stone base. Um, and then a full section of asphalt.
Was it, wasn't this the subdivision where we had like an inch of base underneath it? Was it wasn't this the subdivision where we had like an inch of base underneath it?
I know that what 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 was it? What was Bristol and um what did you find when you did Bristol and um? Kingsley, thank you.
Yeah, I have to go back. I thought that the assumption was that they had small uh base on the even and they went to course.
Do you have a question about the the smaller treatments and and keeping roads in good condition? My understanding is crack seal, the preferred cycle is every two years, does that sound right?
Two to three, yeah.
Um I've raised this before, I've lived on Dover Stevers reconstructed about ten years ago, it's been crack sealed once. We have weeds growing up through crack seal that was put there, um it is separating, we we aren't keeping it in a good condition. Um I've also heard, well, I've seen not my own eyes, but in pictures, the the chip seal we did. The the coating we did in Westridge, there are already cracks that are coming back. Um if the cracks are back this soon, does that mean that the treatment was inappropriate or we should have done? It's sooner or we should have done more prep work. Because the idea is to fill in the micro cracks so the water doesn't get in and destroy it.
You will see reflective cracking on a micro surface or slurry seal because it's, you know, less than three eighths of an inch material that's going down. Um but you could also, the best way to think about those treatments is basically a full width crack seal. Uh because the polymers in in that surface seal. Um build the cracks as they're going over, and there is there is some sand or some fine haggar in there as well, which is your final surface. Um so the underlying pavement is not going to stop moving through, um you know, seasonal freeze thaw. Because of, you know, less than half an inch on top, but seal that cracked out into it to keep the water, we're getting. Issue is when obviously when the water gets uh into the base material and you get particles there, so those treatments, although you do see the cracking. You know, within a couple of years, um still are doing their job.
And and what lastly, a a comment, I would, I would not be in favor of the county, I know it's not part of this project, but I just want to plant this flag. I would not be in favor of them taking control of our signals timing. Uh because road commissions, as traffic engineers, their goal is to get as many vehicles through. In any given time as possible, which is deleterious to what we're trying to build in downtown, where we want it to be a pleasant place for folks to walk and stand. And if you have to wait five minutes to cross Main Street, you're not gonna wait five minutes, you're gonna get in your car and you're gonna drive to Lowe's or somewhere else, even if it takes you more time. Um that's all. Thank you.
To 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 that point, I I also would not be in support of giving over our our signal timings to to the county.
I presume that's not what you were talking about.
For those roads in Dexter Crossing. When was the last time, I mean, I thought we replaced most of those roads about two thousand eight nine ten.
And Dexter Crossing?
Well, yeah, I'm saying in two thousand eight ten, Dan would probably know better than I would, but I'm. I'm almost crossing when we did that first round of all the road repairs, we did a lot in Dexter Crossing, we did a lot. And that's the other thing, we did a lot in front of our apartment, so I mean. I I don't think this is the first time we replaced that asphalt, and I would like to know when it was that we did last, and you mentioned that, you know. We're doing this, we think the base is good, we expect it's gonna last a substantial, I mean, we haven't replaced the asphalt in Western yet. And that's been there since twenty five years, and like I said, I thought we did. But I know we did a lot in Dexter Crossing, maybe not the same ones we're talking about now, but if they have been done. Uh I mean, what do we need to do to the base so that it lasts longer? Because we have to replace the asphalt every ten or twelve fifteen years, that's gonna get pretty expensive, we're not getting twenty years out of it.
Yep, we we could definitely look that up, that along with Main Street question of that, so you can get. Or the historical picture.
So and to the point Councilman Michelle's brought up about in Westridge, there was one resident that raised up an issue and had taken some pictures. I know a lot of the roads that I see your drive on, I don't see a lot of the larger cracks. When when O H M, I O H M's done the Paser ratings for the V for the roads. So when you're doing that, how? How closely are you looking at smaller sections of those longer runs of roads that might have localized issues? Cause like on the north west corner of Park Ridge where it kind of curves around in the back. There was always a section about. House or two houses long that was just not in good shape. And I don't know if we fix that, if we cut that out and repaired that section before we then went on and did micro surfacing and stuff, but it. It we did have one resident who brought it up, and it was on a next door post, Randy Herman, he used to be um. Some of our boards and um, you know, he'd said, we have this cracking, and I said, I understand what you're saying, I tried to explain exactly what you're talking about about the, you know. Um the process and what you'd mentioned, Justin, about trying to keep the roads in good shape, but. We definitely could have localized areas, so I don't know how much to do with that.
Yeah, quick answer to that, so Pazer rating, basically, there's criteria for percentage of different types of distresses, but generally speaking. These ratings are associated with. Certain candidate treat. It's not a perfect science, there is a little bit of subjectivity to it, but um the way that Asset Management Council and Michigan Tech. And everybody that grades sometimes always certified through the state, um the guidance they give you is. There are localized areas like that, you don't wanna, you you want the pager rating for the segment at large to reflect what you would likely do with. So if that means that there's a small area relatively small in relation to the entire segment that needs a spot repair. Wouldn't necessarily drop the road because you do that spot repair before you did a surface seal first. So that's sort of the rule of thumb, we want the ratings to guide our decision making. The other thing I'll mention that ties into that is. Uh if you recall, when we uh talked about this year and a half ago or so. Having the asset management plan in place actually is an important tool for the flexibility of your funding. Um allows um the city to spend more than uh twenty five percent of the major road act fifty one. Allocation on local streets if they deem that's appropriate. Um so having an approved plan in place, you have you filed with the state, and when Justin gets audited. There's no issue there. Every community always has more needs than money, but we have plenty of projects sort of in the hopper. And um you know, here on firearms, Dexter Crossing are examples, a couple of streets got taken off to balance some of this. If the city's successful, um I'm getting additional um. And the county come to the table with more DDA, if there's another um. Large slug of money that comes out of uh financing that gets programmed through the tip. Um you know, we can be very reactive to that. Um and I think the idea is, generally speaking, with these budgets, this is what ought to be spent on road improvements. If you get those other funding sources to help offset that, we back to the with other projects. And having the town approved by council, um and it doesn't need to be by the end of the year, uh but having one in place, um. If you, it's finance, it's flexibility to do that without penalty.
And 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 the intent of the Tampa is to have it adopted every year.
We'll look at it updated with, I mean, construction industry in the last few years has been pretty volatile, I think most people know. Um so as part of this, yeah, we switched some projects around, but we also went back and revisited all the numbers and updated those to get. You know, the most current, um and again, we haven't seen bits for, you know, next season yet, but. Those those have all been looked at and adjusted, and we tend to do that on an annual basis and make whatever adjustments, you know, appropriate.
Maybe this question was asked already, what what's the plan with the grand?
I got a really small version here, which you're resident in.
It's post twenty twenty eight.
Oh, right.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, I don't see it on here, and I I guess I'll. Let me just ramble for a second, um. You know, I I like the planning of this, I I live this stuff, uh so looking out and looking ahead like this is really good. I get concerned always with what it means to somebody looks at it and from Zach's point, holding it up, saying, well, you said you're gonna do this. When we can't, you know, it's hard enough to accurately project what the costs are gonna be next year, let alone four years from now. And then we saw evidence of that, we just the reality of the the economy in twenty twenty four, where, you know, things came in a little higher than. We had estimated, it doesn't mean we're doing anything wrong, it's just sometimes that stuff comes into play. You know, I would like the plan to be flexible enough that if there's an opportunity that we have to piggyback or take advantage of. That we could jump to other streets if we had to. I don't know, and and I know the, I know the theory about, you know, the worst roads, you forget about them. But there's also a passability and a safety perspective that comes into play, gr- grand is not good.
The 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 between.
Between the trailhead.
Jeffords and.
Yeah, the the trailhead and and.
And ma- and.
And Maine, or at least at least Grandview Commons, it's better than down to Grandview Commons where we ask them to do the curb and some spot, but. I would be surprised, that road's gonna continue to fall apart and a a season of plowing. Isn't gonna help it. Not that we can do anything today, but I I don't think you can go four years without doing something there, so I guess well.
So so I I think one of the reasons it didn't make it on the plan is is because of. The question of. Do we wait until after thirty forty five broad is complete?
Yeah, and I'm and I'm totally willing to wait as long as we can, but there there's a point at which that becomes. I mean, you you can't, unless we're gonna call it a graphical road. You know, there's a point, there's a point of of no return where you gotta have to do something, I think is all I'm getting at, I think we're getting close with the way the edges are, that thing. Cause what what happens is nobody wants to put their right tire on the edge. So you get two cars trying to be in the middle and and there's not enough road to wait to avoid it. Anyway, just just a just a thought, I'd like to, Joe, was your motion to approve this, or or did you say you wanted the streets committee, I heard you said. Did you want to have the streets committee meet to talk about some of this?
I made the motion to approve it, but I was hoping we can delay it at least till the next meeting or the first meeting.
Okay, is that a motion?
I was gonna ask Justin if that, if we needed before that.
Um I will, so I I think uh I think we want to have the twenty twenty five program set so we can bid it out. Uh or we'll also start start formally design on it.
Wants to, he wants, and if you looked at his report there, he has, he wants to bring back O H M's proposals for the ones. In uh.
And.
Twenty twenty five.
Right.
So you can say the start of the engineering.
So can we do that first meeting in January, we'll still be okay?
We we can, we we, yeah, 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 we can, we we can bring back uh the final version of this and the design proposal at the same meeting.
Okay, so I'll move, we postpone till the first meeting in June.
Okay, do you want to have the street committee try to meet?
Yeah.
One time?
Yeah.
As part of that motion, okay, to allow the street committee to to meet. The review.
And to get more information.
Yeah, okay. If there's a second? Okay, so so then this motion will be on to approval, be on the table on. Third meeting on thirteenth of January, I mean, right? The motion, Joe, second. Okay, everybody. There with that direction? Please call the vote to postpone.
Yes.
All day?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Semi Pharaoh?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Marcus, thanks for your team's work on this, Justin, Tim, all you guys as well, good discussion on that council. Um new business item M four is discussion of innovation regarding railroad quiet zones. And there's a feasibility study for both of O H M as well.
May I ask how this was initiated?
At least Zach asked it to be on the agenda or asked to be looked at.
We have a couple of uh condominium units next to railroad that are going for one point three, one point four million dollars and. I suspect they're gonna come in.
I just remember when Ann ever tried to go through this and they got hit with the numbers, they were stunned.
Unfortunately, we have fewer crossings than they do.
Yeah. Uh I think if you move out into town, there's a train track through it.
Well, it it, this has been looked at in a lot of different places.
Mine's there.
Uh anybody that's on a railroad. Any community that has a railroad that goes through the town has at least thought of this. My my experience with it is that. Any of the supplemental safety measures. That you would have to put into place to replace. The train horn. Because the the concept is, is that when the train comes around the corner or the curb, it doesn't have to blow its horn as a means of warning that there's a train coming. So when you're absent the sound. You have to make sure that there's enough things that prevent cars from jumping the jacks, which could involve things like. Curbs down the middle. These are things that look weird, okay, there'd be extra gates for pedestrians crossing, because again, if there's no sound. You don't know, you have to stop everybody, I mean, so it's not just. One gate now for cars in one direction and one in the other, it's it's two. Plus on each side for pedestrians, probably, I get confused between the supplemental safety measures and the alternate safety measures, but there's a lot. That's not the worst of it, the benefit, we get to pay for those, railroad will let us pay for those and upgrade all of those intersections so that all that can happen. The worst part, though, is they are, for the benefit of paying for those, we have to share in the liability if there's an accident. And. I get what Zach's saying about people moving next to the railroad, but we all live within earshot of the railroad, and we get very few complaints about the sound of a train horn. And I I just don't see why we want to take on the risk. Associated with this, let alone the cost, and we just talked about transportation improvement plan, I don't know where the money for that would probably come from streets. Those dollars would be competing with everything we just kind of we talked about for however many years. Again, I appreciate the whole concept, but. I I don't, I don't know why we'd want to go there, I I don't think we should. I know there's a lot in here.
Um, I think I agree, um I think, you know, one of the 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 main things for me is that if somebody is. Purchasing a home or building a home um next to the um railroads is with the understanding that. Trains will go through it. For me, a lot of things that in my understanding, um when what you described, the implementation of that. Means that leaves all of the warning signs more on only the visual versus hearing. So it takes some accessibility. Um issues out of the equation for for some that might need it. Um I I don't know hundred percent of all of those things, but that's something that I think also um could be important.
You could correct me if I'm wrong, but hasn't this been on our list longer than the Pelham?
Yeah, probably.
Because I I I mean, I do, I'm not.
We don't keep those dates, but.
But I mean, I just feel like that's that we've, I mean, I I agree with um Sonam. But yeah, if you're buying a property or you're building a property, that's part of the consideration you put into it when you purchase it. And I may be completely out on my own limb here, but I love the train, I live close enough to it that. I hear it, I mean, I know we all do, but you know, I'm I'm closer than some of you guys, and. I personally think it sort of adds to the small town feel of Dexter, and so that on top of everything, we've, I mean, that's like the. Least of my concerns, but the liability for accidents and the fact that I just, I mean, I don't think this is a good use for budget money. I just don't.
Zach?
So I've read in here. And someone correctly phrased wrong, that it we may assume risk, not must. Was that the correct verb? Because they're very different verbs.
So 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 I I I ha- having wrote the memo and having a very limited understanding of of. So 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 I I I ha- having wrote the memo and having a very limited understanding of of. The next steps in the process, um, I I tried to be as as. General as I could. Um, but we we do have um Larry from O H M online uh who is uh managing O H M's. Um, resident uh expert on on quiet zones. So if anybody has any questions, he'd be a good. Good source.
He can answer. I'll ask my other question too then. Um. So this is a high-speed rail. Designated route and with the high-speed rail. There are improvements that are required for the signal. So my question would be, what's the delta between what would be required once it starts to get the. The high speed and what's required for the quiet zone. And uh. My recollection is some of these that I've I've been at, there there is still sound. It's just not the sound of of the horn tooting three times before every crossing. Yeah, the train's gonna make the noise on the tracks that it makes the noise on the tracks. Yeah, right. Those would be my questions for the the technical guru. I'm happy to recognize Larry, if you'd like to say a few words, I appreciate that he. Has been with us the whole meeting.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, City Manager, I appreciate uh. Appreciate you uh having us here to at least explain a few things. Um, the 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 first thing I want to correct is the the flashing lights and the bells that go ding 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 ding. Are still gonna stay. So there there are, there's there's clearly audible sounds um. You know, that that doesn't go away. The only thing that goes away is the routine sounding of a horn. Um, I'll add to that, that if a locomotive engineer sees any sort of a hazard. He has full uh authority to sound the horn. Uh, additionally, if there's any construction at any crossings within twenty-five feet. Um, they will sound the horn as well. So some of these communities where we've done quiet zones. You know, we've had to let the. We've had to make sure that the manager's office communicates, hey, we're gonna be working at this intersection within this distance. Um, for the next two nights, the train horns are gonna sound. So um. Having said that, that um. That addresses the sound aspect. The other aspect that I think I heard was. Um, risk, taking on additional risk. And so um, you're you're not the only community to ask this question. Um, many do. And so I I posed this question to the Federal Railroad Administration. And their their first response was uh CFR forty-nine part two-two-two was specifically written in a manner to uh limit liability. For any municipality or road authority that implements a quiet zone. Um. They were unaware of any. Any lawsuits or any additional um. Insurance requirements that communities might carry. Um, and I I know the city of Battle Creek from personal experience um. Have not had. Um, any any incidents where they've been found liable. And that's that was twelve crossings with three closures uh. And uh two two lines, the uh the Michigan line and the Can- Canadian National Line. So um. I I think that clears up the the couple of questions I initially heard, and I'm happy to take any other questions you might have.
How long does it usually take from start to finish?
Um, it depends. There's two ways that you can implement a quiet zone. You can do. Let's call the public authority designation. And you can, you can follow that path if in fact. You can get your risk index um low enough and. That's by implementing, as you previously stated, supplemental safety measures. Um, the the geometry of of these two crossings um is a little more complex. And so what you end up. With generally would be. Um, maybe you can do a a complete supplemental safety measure. On one side of the crossing, but the other side of the crossing, you can only do a partial. And so when you start. Um, and and that's very common now on the F R A is approving. Um, a lot of these, these have been around for a while, but that then takes you to what's called the uh public application. Uh, approach. And so at that point, your application for a quiet zone goes to F R A in Washington and it's considered and. You know, as as you well know, D C could be a little bureaucratic, so that's hard to kind of pin. Pin down, but um it really is just a matter of once you figure out. Uh, if you can reduce the risk. And uh, you know, is is it, is it affordable? Um. In many cases, it's not. In a lot of cases, it is. I just did a feasibility study for a small community called Climax, two crossings. Much more rural, um, but we figured for about thirty thousand dollars, they could have done both both crossings and silenced. Silence the train horn. Um, I I just want to point out that you're gonna have a lot of opinions on train horns. Um, just like you do airport noise. Um, just like you do highway noise. Opinions are varying and um. But but my experience has has been. That. Uh, it's it's a huge quality of life issue. Um, and. It's it's amazing. What a. The comments you get from a community once the project's done. A lot of folks who were um suspect, oh, I love the train horn. Um, I've had people say, well, my kids will never know what a train horn sounds like again if you if you eliminate the train horn. So again, it's. It's all over the place, but a lot of really positive feedback. People are like, you know, we didn't know what we were living with. Um, so I just share that. So I know you guys are trying to thoughtfully consider your community. Um, and uh. We're seeing more and more of these railroad quiet zones. Um, you you don't have a lot of trains, you know, at the time Battle Creek. Had like thirty-three trains in a twenty-four hour period. Um, right now, I believe you have s- you have six day trains and two night trains. Um, but if, you know, if somebody's work and shift work and they're trying to sleep during the day, that could be very disruptive to them. So if each one of these is very unique. And um. Yeah. Other other questions?
Larry, what would be your guess? On my curb idea?
Well, I think what you're referring to, sir, is a a non-travertial median in the center. Um, I, you know, I've looked at at these crossings and it looks like Dexter really, you know, values pedestrian crossings. And by the way, um, the as long as the pedestrian crossings are within twenty-five foot of an existing crossing, you. There is no requirement for additional gates to go in front of. Uh, you know, on on the sidewalks. Um. They they do have, there are some, like there's one at Western Michigan University in Kalamazoo. And uh, it's broken most of the time. Yeah, which again sends an even worse signal because people just don't, you know, they just now they just go around it. Um. But the the non-travertial curb, we did some of that in Battle Creek, and so that's like a six-inch curb. A lot of it depends on how much road you have, how much right-of-way, existing right-of-way you have. Um, a lot of communities are using. Um, channelization devices. Um, so I was I was just looking at this uh proposed project that M dot's gonna do. Uh, for uh a an express lane. And uh additional monitoring for autonomous cars with some additional signage. And what they're proposing to use is channelization devices that. Are um just epoxied, you know, they would be, in this case, they would be epoxied right to the to the center line. So they really don't take up any additional right-of-way. Um, they're easy to maintain. I I've checked with the city of Battle Creek and say, hey, how's it going? You know, is it is it a pain in the butt? Uh, how often these get hit and. You know, they're like, it's it's no worse than. You know, replacing stop signs or mailboxes when plows hit them. It's. It's just part of their routine. But so that that would be. Typically, my first option is to look at channelization um devices as opposed to a non-travertial curb. The whole idea, though, sir, and you're you were correct in that, is that. The the leading cause of death is folks see the gate go down and then they, if there's nothing obstructing them from going around the gate. Um, that seems to be their inclination. So this is merely. A thing that says, hey, don't go around the gate, but they're very, they're very effective.
Yeah, yeah, my my concern is we have driveways that are in close proximity to both of these crossings. Like the D P W driveway. You can't really channelize and expect the D P W not to turn left. To cross.
Is that on Broad Street?
No, that's central.
It's on Central.
We have, we have Second Street that comes in right at the end there. You channelize it all, you're gonna make Second Street go only right instead of left. I don't think it's practical, but I. I probably know more than I should be.
Well, no, the the these are all good considerations, and that's exactly what we would do. Um, you know, I would do with the help of um some traffic engineers, some pavement designers, and you know, uh Marcus's team. We would take a very close look at it and let you know what's feasible, what's not feasible. Um, and try to give you an idea of what it might cost.
Okay, so we have this as an introduction of information tonight and there's a proposal. Not. Currently slated as an action item. I guess if somebody wants to bring it back on the agenda. They can. Make a motion to do that, we can put it on the next agenda or. Not, but. It's not, it's not an action item to approve anything that. Per se. I think there's great information here. There's a lot of information here. And and by the way, the 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 um. What another community that I'm familiar with concluded is that, yes, the. CFR. Title forty-nine C M R part two-twenty-two is written to limit liability. That doesn't mean eliminate. Liability. And that's a key distinction because we don't have any now. That's my understanding. I'm not trying to play lawyer, but that's what, that was the conclusion that was reached in. Okay, well, hearing nothing, we can always say say something in the council comments or another time. Larry, I appreciate you attending tonight and the information you put together. Um, I guess we're gonna think about it for a little bit before we go forward, so.
Absolutely. They're they're not easy decisions, so I applaud you guys for even considering it.
Thank you again.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, we moved K two down to M five, so we have consideration of board and committee appointments.
I move to approve the board committee appointments as presented. Second.
Motion by all dag second by why? In discussion? Okay, please call the vote to approve the committee appointments.
All dag? Yes, tell.
Yes.
Semi Pharaoh?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Kyo.
Yes. Thank you, motion carriers. We've concluded our new business, so we're down to non-arranged participation. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak this evening that are not arranged? Nobody in person? I don't think God lying either. There. Okay, we're down to council comments. Zach, I'll start with you if you're.
Yeah, so uh, I actually would. Miss the sound of a train myself. I grew up two blocks from the train crossing in my village. And in college, I lived directly across Elbel Field, so when the train came through, our living room shaked. Um, but more importantly, my puppy dog, when he's outside and the train toots its horn, will howl in the most incredible way. Um. So I I like it, I appreciate it, but it is quality of life for other folks around. Um, speaking of which, a fun anecdote, and none of this needs to be in the minutes because it's not important at all, but. Um, if you have a puppy dog that have seizures, the same medicine they get is human medicine, but it's smaller size for children. And when you go pick it up at the human uh pharmacy. They will require you to bring the patient in to sign the disclosure forms, uh, which is a fun conversation to have whenever you you go to it. Uh, one last anecdote, we talked about the front of of state entities doing and not doing things they do. When I was in Indiana as a Steuben County Director of Planning. We had a confined animal feed operation of dairy cattle, five hundred head of cattle. The way they divide the regulatory scheme in Indiana was the local governments get to determine which zoning districts and setbacks they are, and then the state. Does all the operational stuff, how you take care of your your waste and animal treatment, all that stuff. Well, this one had been operating for just shy of ten years. Mitch Daniels, who was governor at the time, was very proud to. To share that the state had the fewest number of employees it had had since nineteen seventy. While the regulatory scheme they have to administer in the population was much larger. So in the nearly ten years that this had been operating, the state had not once done a full inspection of the facility. We routinely got calls from the neighbors saying. They're bringing in dead cows or bringing in too many cows. They're spraying manure when they're not supposed to. And we said, that's that's not us. Call the state. The state never came. The neighbors eventually got upset, called the E P A. The E P A came out and found a hundred and thirteen violations of environmental law. Uh, the state fellow who at that time had, I think, ten, ten or twelve counties, he's responsible, called us up and said, why didn't you call us? And like, they've been calling you for ten years. Um, so it's not unique to Michigan. Uh, it's it's just the nature of the state government, unfortunately. That is it. Thank you, Zach.
Right?
I'm gonna pass.
Wow?
Um, yeah, completely. I just, I mean, I I do with the regard of the train. Um, I do understand that, you know, that. Could, you know, improve quality of life for um certain residents. For me, it gets back to. I feel like I'm I'm here to try to. Improve quality of ru- of life for the community as a whole, and we have a lot of things right now. That are, I I just, I know it's a small line item with twenty-six thousand dollars to even authorize the study. But I don't want to spend twenty-six thousand dollars on something when we don't know. Other costs that are potentially increasing for things that are much more centered to quality of life. Um, for everybody in the community. With that said. I really do need the train that comes through at like two or two-thirty in the morning to tell me to go to bed because it's like I gotta get up for work the next day. And when I hear that, I'm like, okay, what are you doing? That doesn't need to go in there.
Put that in the minutes, wait. Needs an alarm clock. Joe, done, thank you. Okay. Do we have anything to add to the proposed agenda items for future meetings?
Oh, this got bigger.
Yeah.
It went down by one today. Okay, I will seek a motion for adjournment at uh nine forty-five. Is there a second?
Second.
By why? All those in favor, signify and say hi.
Hi.
Hi. Thank you, everybody. Good meeting.